Well, three times a charm. Welcome back. We are going to come to you tonight just audio with visual slides. I do not have a voice made for radio, but we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. Going back into the agenda, I'll repeat the Board President's report. And I would like to open my report this eve, this evening by repeating the role of a Board member as I presented in our January 9th meeting. The Board does not preside over daily operations. We set policy which operations follow. We are not involved in the procurement of services and material, but rather approving those expenditures. We do not handle cases of discipline, only if policies were not followed when addressing. I like to think of us, the Board, as an oversight committee. The Board has two employees, the Treasurer and the Superintendent. We do not have offices anywhere in the district, and we are all employed outside of the district. This is more or less a volunteer position, and our duties are performed on our own personal time. We do get paid $125 per Board of Education meeting, and I made $2,750 in 2019. I had perfect attendance. Preparation and reviewing of documents, committee meetings, attending award ceremonies, sporting events, pep rallies, open houses, graduations, that is all on our own time, and it is unpaid. This year is the fourth year that I have served as President or Vice President. And both roles require agenda planning meetings the week prior to a Board meeting. So instead of 20 to 24 meetings a year, the President and Vice President attend 40 to 48, still paid for 20 to 24. And I won't get into the details of the obligation of the President, but that is why we rotate the position every year, as it comes with additional responsibilities and time commitments. My point this evening is not to complain. I knew what I was signing up for, pre-COVID, and serving my community and having a role in the education of our youth is truly a privilege. We, as Board members, take great pride in the Oland TNG local schools, and serving is our own personal contribution to the community. So that being said, please note that we are parents with families. Our availability is restricted by our employment. Mrs. Fiesel is a bit of a unique situation because she is a Communications Director professionally, and her position allows her constant access to what is going on at the State House, the ability to tend, to attend press conferences and meetings that touch on education, funding, and legislation. So we are very fortunate that her professional and volunteer roles overlap. So my point in sharing this a second time is based on the emails that myself and other Board members have received. I don't know that very many people watched our last meeting when we discussed this, so I do think it's important to share that the Board does not have a way to track comments and suggestions. So let me speak now on specifically what our role is in returning, in regards to returning back to school. With the exception of Dr. Wise, none of us are educators. It is our role to come up, it is not our role to come up with a plan. The professionals in education are doing that, and they will present that plan to us momentarily. It is our role to engage in discussion of what that plan looks like and approve or reject the recommendations brought before us. So think of it like this: Would you want the same person that writes the check to sign the check? That would not have a proper check and balance. So as an oversight committee elected by the community, how we move the district forward when the community is not unified is the question. So we look to our experts in education on how to meet the needs of our students. They were not given a guidebook for this pandemic. They are in the process of writing one. They do not have all the answers yet, because again, they are in the process of writing one. Last, last year, all of the districts were forced to very quickly react to a shutdown. Now educators will have professional development to support their instruction, their delivery of instruction, and they can be more proactive than reactive. So we look to the medical professionals for answers on how to safely move forward. When things shut down in March, I'm pretty confident that the assumption was would we would have a lot more insight about COVID-19 before our students had to return to school in August. However, the mystery continues, and the answers are slow. But medicals, medical professionals have been consistent in their messaging of wearing masks, washing your hands frequently, and social distancing. So we look to the community to demonstrate the empathy that they have so clearly expressed is imperative our students learn. We plead with you to ask these questions before making social media posts or sending emails. And I have personally been asked the question, "Am I monitoring the back-to-school sites?" No. It is very negative. It emotionally drains me, and I can't do that. So before you make that post, before you send that email, please ask yourself, is this plan that you are taking issue with, is it benefiting the most students, or are you just addressing what it is you want for your student? I need the community, we need the community, to look at this plan and how it impacts working parents, parents that don't have daycare options and can't afford them, students with learning disabilities, anxiety, food insecurity. I think that you will find there is not one solution to the question, and everyone's comfort level varies. So tonight, our district will present options. We don't know how long this pandemic will continue plaguing us, but we do know that we have to find a path forward, and that path has to demonstrate fluidity. So what I can say with certainty is we will all be impacted, some more harshly than others, but we all will have to sacrifice what we want for what is possible. We're scared. The future has numerous unknowns, and our natural instinct is to control a situation. However, there are a lot of circumstances that are outside of our control right now. So in summary, I implore you, the community, to be optimistic with your students. They take your lead, and resiliency is modeled. We appreciate your advocacy for, for the students, but please be respectful that it is not possible to satisfy everyone's requests. And finally, I would like to applaud the leadership taken by Mr. Rafe and his leadership team. There is a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this, and it continues. He and his team have not backed down from the challenges before them. Every day, they move our path forward based on what they think is best, rather than what is easiest. And our leadership team is responsible for over 22,000 students and 2,600 staff members. What we do know is, we can't educate children if we don't have a healthy staff to transport them, to feed them, to clean our buildings, and to educate them. So where our state and country have been lacking in leadership, this pandemic, during this pandemic, our district has stepped up. The situation is fluid. It is certain to change, and it is together that we will have to move forward. Thank you, especially for those that have had to sit through me saying this two or almost three times. So moving on, we will revisit Mr. Rafe's Superintendent Report. Please take the podium.
Well, that just sounded just as nice as that could have been.
Long!
You said you, you don't have a voice for radio. I like to say all the time I have a face made for radio. So, all right. Well, thank you again, and thank you, everyone, for being here. I did say, I, I am gonna repeat the thank yous for, since I do want the community to hear. I do think it's really important for us as a leadership team and our district administration to know how supportive the Board is, and you guys are, have very high standards, because the community has very high standards. You hold us accountable to those high standards. You ask great questions, push us to be better at what we do for our students and staff and for our community, and, you know, it's, I think the leadership starts with, with the Board. We have a great administrative team here. Summers typically are, you know, a little bit calmer for us, as people go on with their lives away from school, and this certainly hasn't happened this summer. But our, our executive leadership team and Treasurer's Office and all of our directors that are here tonight have worked tirelessly all, all summer to continue to build this plan moving forward and have options for our students. So I'll talk certainly a lot more about that, but thank you, thank you to everyone here for all that you've done, because you guys have certainly risen to the challenge. With that, I always like to start with, you know, examples of us, people in the district live in the mission, so we, Communications Team sent out a request for some activities, fun activities, and some of our community members responded. Here we have a picture of Cameron and Kennedy, who spent a lot of time learning about cooking and nutrition. Xander and Sophia did a lot of outdoor exploring and hiking. Leah learned to fly a kite, and Gavin became SCUBA certified. So I'm sure there were a lot of stories. I did say before, again, say it again, I think one positive byproduct of the pandemic is that it did cause a lot of our families to spend a lot of time together, which I'm sure is a good thing, but it also may be an indication of why everybody wants their kids back in school as mu, just as much, so. Things do keep pressing on, so here we have a picture of our elementary school 16 site up off of Peach Bowl Road, so the site is cleared. That is a picture of the pad, a drone picture of the pad. Foundations are poured, and we should be going vertical here in the next few weeks. So we are scrambling to get completely on, on schedule and caught up, because we did have the delay because of the delay in the vote, and, and so, Mr. Gordon and his team, I have every confident that we will once again deliver a building on time and under budget, so.
Okay.
Are they? Thank you. So I just wanted to, this, this touches on what we're going to be talking about in, as we present our One Oland TNG Back Together 2020 Plan. We're gonna have a lot more detailed information here tonight. Obviously, our microsite will continue to be updated as we roll out more and more information and provide more and more answers to the questions that our community has, so that they can make an informed decision with regards to returning to school. So we're looking forward to sharing that. Want to touch, I'll pause for the delay, and the slide advances. Touch on a few of our action items. We have three new Pupil Services Supervisors. Chandra Earp, who actually previously worked for us, is returning. Ben Jenkins and Cherie Wright are all replacement positions for administrators that moved on from our district. Mr. Wright will be giving a presentation on a revised 2020 district calendar that will be on the agenda for your approval. And then you see there are three purchases for things that are COVID-related. We are, we need additional Lexia seats for our students to use the Lexia program. We have additional seats for ST math licenses for elementary students, and then a large purchase for PPE and face masks. So we will be ready. Mr. Meyer will touch on that on his part of our back-to-school presentation with regards to all of the PPE and safety equipment we're buying. With that, I'll take any questions. Yes, sir.
A Mr. Virgil hand, Kevin!
Are we gonna be tracking the COVID-related expenditures, so that way if state or federal money becomes available, we're in a position to capitalize on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we are. Are you, is that in your report tonight?
Yes, that is part of our Treasurer's Report tonight, talking about how we are tracking that and where we are to date.
Good.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, Mrs. Hepfield, will you please join us with the Treasurer's Report?
Forgive me, I'm a little old school and have notes with me. But thank you for the opportunity to talk about some general updates from the Treasurer's Department. I also want to just take a brief moment before I get into this and say thank you to our technology staff who's with us this evening. I know that we've had a few technical difficulties, but again, everyone's patience and understanding is very much appreciated as we continue to deal with the new COVID environment which we are in. So thank you for that. Moving forward, we have four items that I would like to give general updates on: House Bill 164 summary, the Federal CARES Act funding, fiscal year '21 state funding update, and our overall fiscal position update as of today. So we have, I have a correction for you in terms of the House Bill 164 summary. The House Bill 164 allocation funding was to restore a portion of the state foundation funding that was withdrawn from the district as of May. So you may have remembered, we had conversations about the governor coming through in May and asking the state budgets to be cut by up to 20% to find ways to deal and react to the pandemic. With that, the district received additional funding back from House Bill 164. That was just about $1.9 to $2 million in additional funding. These funds were distributed through the Ohio Department of Education and therefore were not distributed through the federal CCIP program that I originally had thought they would be distributed from, but rather through our direct funding in the foundation. This is reflected as additional funding over fiscal '20 estimates in line 1.035, unrestricted grants and aids, and the June Board financials. So this is a positive impact to our June fiscal year end of about $2 million in additional revenue, because it wasn't treated as a set-aside fund as we had originally thought. With our Federal CARES Act funding, the federal government has allocated additional CARES dollars that are set-aside funds. So it's really a bit confusing. They all come out as administration of CARES Act funding, but come in different waves or different buckets, so to speak, in terms of where we have to record those funds. The Federal CARES Act funding allowed for an additional estimated about $1 million to support increased costs related to COVID-19 recommended operational protocols. These funds will be administered through the CCIP federal grant system, just as the first CARES Act distribution was done. This means these funds will not be in the forecast. So originally, with our CARES Act funding, we received about $245,000. That was put into a set-aside fund for fiscal year '20. Those funds were not applied directly to our COVID-related expenditures. We knew at the time that we were in good shape, as we were ending the fiscal year, and that we would be under budget and could use general fund dollars to take on those expenditures that we had right at the end of the year, and saved that $245,000 for current fiscal year. So what that means is we have approximately $1.268 million in federal COVID protocol funding. So those funds will offset things like PPE expenditures, masks, face shields, sneeze guards, social distancing, placement stickers on the floors, things of that nature. It should also help us take care of some of our additional substitute funding or substitute needs that we'll have moving forward with our plan and protocols that we'll go into as Mr. Rafe discusses, the re, the coming back-to-school plan. In terms of fiscal year '21 state funding, this has also been an area that's very fluid and up in the air. We know that non-auto sales tax continued to improve. April receipts were up by 17.7%, or were 17.7% under estimates, excuse me, while June receipts were, were up and only under budget by 4%. So we know that the economy is improving. It's seeing more revenue coming in, in terms of general state revenue. So there is a possibility that FY '21 state aid might match the final funding that we received in fiscal year '20 at that settlement date, but we don't have official information on whether or not that's gonna occur. So we're still monitoring that. It's our belief that it's on the way, but again, without it actually posting, we tend to hedge our bets on that.
Funding for FY '21 isn't what we were anticipating-
Correct, it's still reduced.
Right, so it is still reduced. I mean, it's better than what we thought when we approved the forecast in May-
Correct.
But it, from the original state budget, it is reduced. Because I think it was supposed to be around 14 million for FY '21.
Correct. So at this point, we were hoping that we would maintain the same level as fiscal year '20. That's what was communicated to us as we were putting together the May forecast, that fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '21 could be anticipated as the same funding level. Once the state came back and gave us that additional funding back for fiscal year '20, that's what's in question. Will we get that additional $2 million back? It's not really additional, but be given back the $2 million for fiscal year '21 as well. What I can tell from looking at our school financial report with, off of the Ohio Department of Education's website, it does look like we are at about $747,000 more than we were for our June, May and June estimations. So that's a positive. It does look like it's growing a little bit, but it's not $2 million yet. So I'm not certain if they will give another, you know, $1.3 million to us, or if that $700,000 is about where we'll level out. So we'll continue to monitor and track it. We'll continue to get updates. We will have updates as we present our monthly Board financials to the Board and the community to show what's actually being posted and given to the district at that time. Of course, if we have more legislative action that's available, we'll also report on that, so we know about where we stand as we move forward through this year. But again, you know, it's as fluid as the planning process for back-to-school, I would say, and what the state is going to give us, and how it will be allocated and how we have to treat that for reporting purposes. So the next slide I have for you gives you more specific information about the financial position update. I apologize, the colors are a little off-putting, larger than they are smaller. I'll remember that next time and not use such bold colors, forgive me. But what we can, what we know from our financial position is that we closed fiscal year '20 approximately $3 million under budget. We had $2 million returned from the state, and we were about $1 million under budget in terms of costs. So that's really gonna help us as we move forward into fiscal year '21. We know the Federal CARES Act funding will support nearly $1.3 million of COVID-related costs at this time, which leaves about $1.7 million in estimated cost, COVID-related cost, that will be applied to the five-year forecast. Increases in substitute workers needed to help with our operations are a big portion of this that comes out of our purchased services line. And then, of course, we also have costs that are related to PPE and other materials that are needed for social distancing and making sure that our students and staff are as safe as possible in the environment. So let's take a look at some of those numbers. We can see that based on comparison from our May forecast submission, that in fiscal year '21, we had approximately $263 million coming in in revenue. We're at about $262.8, so that's lower. That's reflective of not quite knowing exactly how much increase we will receive in state funding for fiscal year '21. We are also monitoring the impact of the economy on real estate tax collections. Whether we typically, we typically see about a 97% to 98% collection rate, and we typically see a 50%, around a 51% to 49% split between first-half collections and second-half collections. So we're monitoring those things as well as we move forward to understand how that will all impact our revenue moving forward into the October forecast. But you'll notice that it's not a real significant shift. While it is around $1 million, that's a small percentage of our overall impact to this budget revenue of about $263 million. In terms of expenditures, as we look at the May forecast compared to back-to-school and in-person, those expenditures are reflective of having our CARES Act funding and what we can post to that federal funding versus what we can post into the five-year forecast. So those do report a little bit less. So we have two positive things going for us. We ended fiscal year '20 better than we thought, and for fiscal year '21, we have additional CARES money than we knew we had when we were putting together the five-year forecast, both of which are helping us at this time. So the net effect of having more expenditures at this time is really kind of offsetting itself in terms of the overall impact to the five-year forecast. Mr. O'Brien, in terms of tracking your, tracking the COVID costs, we have been working really closely with our business department. Mr. Gordon and his staff are doing an excellent job of making sure that they're calling out expenditures that are COVID-related versus daily operational expenditures, because that can be a little tricky when we're talking about cleaning products and things that we would normally use. And so we have built spreadsheets that we are looking at and talking about and discussing that goes through all of those expenditures from face shields, again, cloth dividers on wheels, disinfectants, bottle fillers for our water fountains, so our students aren't putting their mouths up against shared receptacles, and also looking at things such as the dividers for classroom tables and lunch tables, looking at additional folding tables, tables that are bigger and longer, so that social distancing is available. And so all of those things are being tracked, and we're estimating our substitute costs as we move forward. So again, we will be able to have that information available on a regular basis as we move forward in our month-to-month financials. Yes?
Mrs. Fiesel has a question.
To go along with those additional COVID costs, a lot of school districts are talking about the additional costs that they're gonna have in technology, particularly making sure that the students have computers and Wi-Fi access. Are we anticipating those? I mean, I know we lent out about 800 computers the last, when we closed down in March. Are we anticipating any large buys like that?
At this point, we don't have any additional buys planned. I think it's still being studied. Forgive me if I'm talking more than Dr. Fede could probably give us information. As we talk about the planning, coming back to school, he'll probably address that a little bit for you as well. But those additional costs are not in what we have right now. We do have information that there is another CARES Act funding. Again, it's all labeled CARES Act, so forgive me, it gets very confusing as we discuss it. But there is additional funding that is to be released or set aside for technology needs, whether that's providing hotspots or internet connectivity to the community and/or devices. So we're monitoring that funding as well to see what might come of it. What I know right now is that it seems to be related to the district's ability to quote-unquote "afford" it, just like our state funding regular model is. So I'm not sure what that will look like for us, if it will be a significant dollar amount for Oland TNG or not. That's one of the items we'll continue to track and get more information on. Thank you for asking that. Are there other questions?
So I guess the, the question is, is it really incremental expenditure, or is it just a shift in, or just a technology spend where you'd normally be spending on hardware in-classroom, software and product, now you're gonna shift to more virtual-type expenditures? You're gonna be, I think you just need to be careful on just tagging everything COVID-related expenditure, when really, you're just redirecting your technology investment to the new environment.
Right. And so, you know, the, we're really studying with that hybrid model, again, Mr. or Dr. Fede will get into that, what programs are, are available? How are we reutilizing or rethinking about the products that we have, so that we can service that and not just- the products that we have so that we can service that and not just buying a different piece of software, a different piece of technology to service what we already have. That's a good point. And lastly, I want to move forward just to, again, show ending cash balances and days' cash on hand. Again, these are estimates. This will not match the October forecast update. We know that. We know that this is a fluid situation. Again, it's as fluid as our planning models are. So as we get new protocols, as we get new information from the health department about what we can do within the buildings, we also get new funding information. The good news is, as we look at our five-year forecast days cash on hand, I'm just going to jump down to that line because it's the easiest to read quickly. We are in a better position with our June actuals and coming back in person than we were when we closed the May forecast and submitted it to the Ohio Department of Education. Again, that's largely due to being, landing about three million dollars better or to the good over what we had expected for fiscal year twenty-twenty and having some additional federal funding for PPE expenditures. So more to come, and we'll continue to update and send that to the board and do some posts and things with that so that people understand how, how fast it's changing and what we know about that. Are there additional questions I can answer for you in terms of tracking the expenditures and reporting it? Yes?
On the, on any COVID-related purchases, like the PPE or the hand sanitizers and the signage, so those are not going to be in the general fund because they're paid for out of the coronavirus, the Cares Act funding?
They will be for this fiscal year, starting July first.
Right.
Yes. We did purchase some of those sneeze guards, some of the Plexiglas items that we need around central office and some of the office spaces last fiscal year. They actually were paid for last fiscal year. We left that to the general fund, though, because we knew we were already going to be under budget.
And just to reiterate for people listening, we have not started collecting on the levy that was passed.
Correct.
Because that does not get collected until January. So the person who said to me, "I didn't approve COVID expenses, we aren't even collecting your new money yet."
Well, and you are absolutely correct. We will see the proceeds for that in January, February, March. And so, you know, again, valuations play into that. The Delaware County auditor and Franklin County auditors will be responsible for property valuations assessments. That's not something that's in our purview. We do not set those assessments or make any recommendations in that action. That is information that is provided to us. So, you know, we are very grateful that our community supports our fiscal responsibility and transparency, that they support the education that our students get, and made that levy a success for us. Truly grateful. But COVID nineteen is not a, it's a pandemic. It's not anything anyone can control. And so we're doing the best that we can to be as proactive and effective in our management skills through that, rather than coming up with the playbook and being able to share that. We're honestly doing the, doing this as we move forward. So, yes, I apologize for the community's frustration, but we're all in this together.
Any impact to the health claims in the reserve?
Oh, good question. At this time, the health claims are actually lower than we have seen previously. The feeling is that people haven't gone to their physicians, they haven't been following up with their doctor and getting maybe some of that preventative care that they normally would because they're staying out of the offices for fear of being exposed. We will have our claims information for May within the next couple of weeks, and then June is, it's usually about a month in arrears by the time we get all the reporting for that. But we will have a full update as we move into the forecasting season and can talk about premium renewals and things of that nature. But right now, we're in good shape with that. Quick question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll now move into public participation. Our communications director, Ms. Krista Davis, has been in receipt of email submissions. Do we know approximately how many email submissions we have?
Good evening, everyone. We've had approximately one hundred public participation submissions for tonight. And so my understanding is that we have thirty minutes per board policy to share our public participation. I will read the comments that we've received until that thirty, those thirty minutes expire, and I'd like to assure everyone who has submitted a comment that we will be sharing all comments with the Board of Education so that even if you don't hear your comment being shared this evening, it will be shared with the board after the meeting or, and additionally, I'd like to also share that we have tried to divide out the public participation submissions by themes. So in the thirty minutes, I hope to represent the varying views instead of one particular set of views. So I'm going to jump around from theme to theme in hopes of providing a broad spectrum of the opinions that exist in our community.
Thank you. And the, we don't have visuals, so the audience cannot see that we have a table of categories, so.
Correct.
The floor is yours, Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. All right. The first comment is from Eileen Wagner at seven forty-seven Treebend Drive, Westerville. "I'd like to urge, urge the school board to follow the guidance of all of the health districts within the jurisdiction of the school district. As a resident of the Delaware County side of Westerville, our family and our neighborhood must follow the regulations set by Franklin County Public Health, even if Delaware County is not yet at the same COVID alert level. I ask for clarification about what happens if Franklin County goes to Level Four before Delaware County, and those of us in Westerville and Columbus are then restricted by regulations more than those in the Delaware General Health District. I haven't received a response. I do not think it is an issue for families like mine," I'm sorry, "I do think it is an issue for families like mine and something the school board should take under consideration. "A significant number of the Delaware County cases are coming from the area along the Franklin County border, which makes sense because many of us work, worship, and shop on the other side of the invisible county line. Delaware County and Olentangie schools do not stand apart from the central Ohio area. To act as though the risks to our students and staff is less makes no sense. I hope OLSD will consider moving to a hybrid plan at Level Two and virtuals at Level Three and Four, or planning to be exclusively virtual for the first quarter or semester of the school year. There are no ready solutions in this situation, but as someone who has had loved ones and friends catch COVID and who knows someone who died of it, I'd prefer we err on the side of caution. My children love their teachers and school staff. We want them to stay healthy. If we continue to plan to shift based on levels, I hope the district will clarify the plan so that it does not change weekly. A plan that changes that frequently disrupts education, makes teaching more difficult, and puts working parents in a bind because childcare is almost never that flexible. In addition, I'm particularly concerned by the risks posed by the current transportation plan. Our buses are already crowded, and I've never known students to be able to fully keep their hands to themselves. All the restrictions in the building mean little when kids are packed like sardines on bus rides that often exceed fifteen minutes. Thank you for your time and consideration." This is from Stephen McGuidwin, two twenty-two Long Meadow Court, Powell, and I apologize for any names that I butcher. "I'm an attorney and have two children attending YN.RUN Elementary School. I strongly urge the school board to adopt the hybrid attendance model at a Level Two emergency and to adopt the virtual attendance model at a Level Three and Four emergency. While we all desire a return to normalcy, such is not our current situation. As recently as last week, the White House Coronavirus Task Force identified Columbus, Ohio as one of ten metropolitan areas where aggressive steps are needed to mitigate the COVID nineteen outbreak. In response, this week, other local school districts, including Columbus City and Hilliard, have modified their attendance models in favor of hybrid and virtual learning. During this period of uncertainty, we should err on the side of ensuring the safety of students, teachers, staff, and the local community. As we learned this past spring, our teachers and students are resilient. They can succeed and persevere even in non-traditional learning environments. We should keep in mind that this pandemic is only temporary, and it will pass much quicker if we all make safety the top priority. Thus, I strongly urge the school board to adopt the hybrid attendance model at a Level Two emergency and to adopt the virtual attendance model at a Level Three and Four emergency." This is from Swetha Avula. I do not have an address. She says, "I am requesting the board to provide international languages and accelerated math programs through distance learning as well. Currently, I am hearing these are not provided through the distance learning program." This is from Melissa Muir, sixty-ten Braymore Drive, Galena. "I am looking for information regarding learning equity between committed distance learning and in, and in-school learning, whether five-day, hybrid, or remote. If the students who are in school buildings are on the hybrid model for a significant part of the school year, in theory, those students will receive less instruction and cover less material over the course of the year when compared to students in the one-hundred percent committed distance learning program. Will the committed distance learning students be learning at a normal pace since they'll receive instruction five days per week remotely? Or will the pace of their learning be slowed down to line up with what the in-person learners will be doing? I believe this answer is critical, is a critical piece of information for parents who need to make a decision about what model to choose by Sunday." This is from Kelly Command. "I have seen the plan and want to congratulate you on developing what I think is the best possible plan for balancing a wide range of concerns and opinions, and that is focused on maximizing the quality of instruction delivered within the budget you have to work with. But I do have a few questions. One, what consideration was given to look, looking at a cost-benefit analysis when determining our back-to-school plan? I'm asking because it seems to me that we came up with the best plan with the budget we have, but we are still looking at a plan that falls way short of what many of us, especially those with younger or special-needs kids, are used to. To see that drop in services and quality while knowing the cost per student is actually increasing is quite frustrating. Are there other alternatives for a back-to-school plan that might offer even a little less than the current plan, but that would come with dramatically reduced costs for the district? For example, could we not drastically increase student-to-teacher ratios for some of the online learning elements in the plan? Two, can you provide a rough estimate of how current projected district's expenses with this plan compare to what the projected district's expenses were pre-COVID? Number three, how does this impact the normal four-to-five-year timeframe between when new operating levies are needed? Should we expect the operating levy we just passed to still last about four to five years? Or do we expect it to be longer or shorter until a new levy will be needed?" This is from Kristen Caldor, twenty-four twenty-four Edgehill Drive, Powell, Ohio. "This email is in regard to the attendance model that was proposed by OLSD. My main concern is that the current attendance plan seems very uncertain. It is likely that our county will bounce back and forth between Levels Two and Three for quite a while. With that being the case, I feel it would make more sense to begin the year with both Levels Two and Three following the hybrid plan. This would allow for much more consistency for staff, students, and parents. If our county is consistently in Level Two by the end of the first semester, we could then move to Levels One and Two as the full-time attendance and Level Three at hybrid. I trust that the board has the best interests of everyone involved in mind. Thank you so much for listening to our feedback." This is from Kathy and Chris Snyder, four fourteen Ashmore Circle East, Powell, Ohio. "Our students need to be in school five days a week. I have three sons who graduated from Olentangie Liberty High School and one daughter who will be a sophomore at Olentangie High School. I also taught first grade at YN.RUN in two thousand one and two thousand two. My husband volunteered his time to coach Liberty Middle School football and wrestling, and then went on to volunteer at Liberty High School coaching, coaching football and wrestling. He volunteered for over ten years. We also paid for and built the wrestling room at Liberty High School. We have been huge supporters of the Olentangie School District. Unfortunately, I have to say that we are extremely disappointed in how our school district is handling the return of students this upcoming school year. There is no need to follow Governor DeWine's guidelines. The virus has become extremely political, and we do not need to be at the mercy of this political mess. The data from around the world is showing that children are not very susceptible to the virus. Many, many pediatricians have come out and said that children need to be in school. My daughter completed all of her assignments last spring, but she did not get the quality of education that she would have received if she would have been at school. She deserves better than that. All of these students deserve better. Plenty of school districts across the state are sending their students back five days a week and are not relying on the governor's levels to determine their schedules. We have administrators and board members who are more than capable of deciding what is best for our students. As a taxpayer, I expect more out of our district." Jamie Geary, forty-four seventy-five Catherine's Way, Westerville. "I am writing to beg that you find a way to send our kids to school full-time. Our children have not been in contact with their peers or teachers since early March, and it's taking a toll on them and families. The lack of formal education and social interaction can be detrimental to these kids. It's devastating to see that this is getting so out of control. What if we acted this way about the flu? It is a fact that the flu affects way more people than this virus. We have got to consider the implications to these children and families more than just potentially getting sick. Keeping them home can be way more harmful. Be leaders and show that you can send kids back full-time in a safe way. Stagger the start and end times to avoid larger crowds. Enforce social distancing, lunch in the classroom, et cetera. If there is an option for kids to stay home voluntarily, then there should be an option for those who want to send their kids full-time voluntarily. It should be up to each family. We are losing faith in this school system and are even considering sending our kids to private schools as they are keeping their kids in full-time. Why can't Olentangie figure this out? Please keep our schools open." Russell Wangler, seventeen oh seven Redwood Valley Court, Lewis Center. "Number one, the current peer-reviewed studies from the CDC and both the Korean Contact Tracing Study and the JAMA Network ACE II Studies show that prepubescent children are both the least likely to get sick and the least likely to spread the disease. Kids in this age group are ten times more likely to die of a lightning strike than COVID. Elementary schools should restart, and teachers should wear masks. Number two, the CDC case and death data by age group shows that the risk of full-time in school for all grades in Olentangie specifically and in most locations generally is very low. Based on historical COVID data for the country and our county, less than ten percent of Delaware County's population has any meaningful risk. Those individuals are well-known to family and friends. The online option will support this important part of the community by enabling any who might live with them to remain isolated. Three, if you stay with the current plan for the 2020 school year, please consider live streaming middle and high school classes. This can allow full-time, hybrid, and temporary homeschooling classes to remain consistent and simplify teachers' jobs by maintaining a similar schedule and lesson plans across all approaches. Those electing online learning for a semester would have a different approach based on that plan, but wouldn't have to if the board chose one approach for all. I and many others would be happy to support ad hoc funding if needed to enable a livestream approach." Melissa Fisher Rogers, eighty-eight fifty-five Honey Ash Road, Lewis Center. "Please offer foreign language for committed distance learners. As a current Spanish teacher, I know that taking a year off of language learning will be extremely detrimental to our students' education and progress, if not making it impossible to jump back in the following year. Consistency is key in language learning. Students who are forced to choose committed distance learning due to medical conditions need to have the same access need to have the same access and opportunities as their able-bodied peers." Jill Bryan, 3075 Rossmore Circle, Powell. "Please ensure this year's senior class gets to register first for online and in-school classes. Seems logical, but my senior daughter has just two classes left to go and our fear is that she'll get bumped from taking those and be forced into classes she doesn't need. Allow the seniors to take just what is needed, too." Allison Lyon, PhD, 1820 Powell Road, Powell, Ohio. "First, thank you so much for the insight to give parents and students a choice about in-person school attendance this coming year. While there is much debate about the execution of these options, I'm grateful to have a choice. Next, I'd like to ask a few lingering questions. Number one, preliminary evidence suggests that children under the age of 10 may be less likely to transmit SARS-CoV-2 in comparison to adults or children 10 and above. If a middle school or high school in our district has an outbreak, not a limited number of cases in which contact tracing can be utilized to manage spread of COVID-19, will the district consider shutting down in-person attendance at that school? Would the shutdown be district-wide or based upon the specific school affected? Number two, in the attendance model under Level 3 in a hybrid model scenario in which students are spending half their time at home, how does the district propose ensuring that students at home are actually having educational needs met if parents are unable to address those needs due to work and teachers are unavailable due to being in class? Is it fair to expect teachers to assemble lesson plans for in-person and virtual learning and then to be able to revise those on potentially a weekly basis? Number three, in the spring, this pandemic required extensive parent involvement for distance learning. While the district is providing extensive training to teachers about how to best use the chosen platforms, much of the learning this year will probably occur virtually and there are likely to be challenges. Are systems being utilized to encourage parent-teacher communication beyond standard conferences? Some teachers were overwhelmed by the amount of email in the spring. Are there other opportunities to encourage communication?" Stacy Turner, 8881 Sedona Court, Lewis Center. "I believe most parents would prefer to send their kids back full-time, five days per week. That being said, only if it can be done safely. I wish it would at least be considered that the hybrid model applies at both the orange and red levels. The Delaware County Board of Health, CDC, studies out of Europe, China, and Israel, and the World Health Organization all recommend six feet apart and masks is what will best keep our children and communities safest. I applaud Olentangie's efforts, as I am sure coming up with a plan to suit most of us is extremely difficult and I'm aware that not everyone can be pleased. I support the hybrid model in place but would like to see it extended to the orange level in an effort to better avoid purple, which I feel most parents would prefer not to fall into. Cases are on the rise in children and teenagers in Lewis Center. It will likely only get worse once they are all together. And what will happen if multiple teachers are afflicted? Just because studies have shown most kids do not die, though truthfully, there is not yet enough data to support this assumption, doesn't mean sending them all together is safe. Long-term effects are unknown. I want our kids to go back as much as they can safely and I would like to avoid online learning as much as possible. Teachers did a wonderful job last spring, but 100% online learning leads to a multitude of other problems. Thank you for your attention to this matter and for the time you are all spending reading parent comments. We know you do not have an easy decision in front of you." This is from Neda Yazdani, 5600 Heathrow Drive, Powell. "Please consider that many working parents are also caregivers to high-risk individuals within their households. We request that you consider the hybrid option as a permanent option for at least the first semester. The benefits are as follows. Number one, the hybrid plan will ensure the social and emotional well-being of our children. Number two, the hybrid plan will help reduce class sizes and help manage the spread of the virus and lowers the risk of the virus getting transferred to the households with high-risk individuals. Number three, a consistent hybrid plan will provide structure for the kids and will help working parents plan their carriers based on a set schedule instead of caregivers, I think, based on a set schedule instead of having to worry about childcare going back and forth between different plans. We appreciate your continuous efforts in keeping our community safe." Rudy and Kristen Fernandez, 283 Meadowview Drive, Powell. "We are writing to ask that you open schools for five days a week, onsite classes at Olentangie Schools. Our kids don't learn as effectively from online curriculum and desperately miss the structure and student interaction that day-to-day in-school classes offer. Additionally, the data clearly shows that COVID spread among young people is minimal and overall presents very low risk. Currently, private schools in Columbus are opening up for five days a week with classes onsite, Wellington, DeSales, St. Charles, and others. If private schools around Ohio can open, we ask that you follow their lead and do the same. Thank you." Dawn Rorys, 5907 Harrow Glen Court. "I'm not even quite sure how to start because I'm so beyond frustrated. I can't see straight most times. Why are we acting this way with a virus with a 99.8% survival rate? The seasonal flu is deadlier. Why didn't we act this way with SARS, swine flu, H1N1, any new pandemic that has come our way? We've lived through many. We've had no idea what the effects of those viruses would be. We're being fed maps and graphs from our governor that don't even make sense. There's no way we should be at the level we are at. Clearly, there's an agenda that has nothing to do with the well-being of Ohioans or our children. There's no reason for our children not to be in school full-time and participate in their sports and activities. This is killing their spirits and doing forever damage. Thousands and thousands of doctors and nurses in the Pediatric Association are all speaking out about exactly this. It's a slap in the face to the millions and millions that have worked this whole time for anyone that doesn't want to go back to work. The ones that don't can stay home. I'm deeply frustrated and concerned about the mandatory mask-wearing. I know way too many and have seen too many testimonials from doctors, nurses, scientists speaking out against them, including my own. When have we ever masked up before? It's unsanitary and so unhealthy. We were made to breathe in oxygen and expel CO2, not continue to breathe our waste. A mask pushes particles up into the eyes. Speaking of eyes, viruses go in through the eyes. Also, why aren't we wearing goggles? Paper cloth masks do nothing. It's actually written on the boxes they come in. CDC and the World Health Organization both have said that, but now, all of a sudden, it's different? The data's all over the place. The kids will be touching their noses, mouths, and faces 100 times more than they normally ever would, exactly what we are told not to do. Moisture breeds bacteria, exactly what the masks will be doing. We were given an immune system for a reason and the masks compromise that. Let's put aside all the physical deterrence of wearing a mask and think about the psychological and emotional damage it will be doing to our kids in a mask all day, every day, and that's all they see around them. Optics, optics, optics. None of it makes sense at all. Open up full-time. Use some extra sanitary measures. Great for the seasonal flu and all other viruses anyway. And make masks optional. They do way more harm." This is from Kristin Kelly, no address. "Is in-person school daily an option regardless of county color? I would like my girls to have a school experience. If they are hybrid, on off-days, will there be an online program to follow with a teacher and classmates? Will an online teacher and classmates with a schedule be an option for committed distance learning?" This is from Julie Roddy, 5639 Greenfield Drive, Galena. "First of all, thank you for trying to wrap instruction around an ever-changing horrible situation. We still do not believe sending the students in for full-class, five-day instruction is the healthiest educational avenue at Level 2. I submitted the following to the Microsite Feedback on July 16th. Our family will not be choosing the committed distance learning model, even though all three did extremely well at home in the last quarter. Our eldest, who is a rising senior, was one of the first students to participate in the blended learning class community, a larger 45-50 student combined class of online and in-classroom instruction with two teachers. One teacher specialized in science and math, the other specialized in English, language arts, and history. Assignments are posted in Schoology. The students each have their own Chromebook. Our middle child was in the blended learning community for 4th and 5th grades and our youngest was in a 4th grade that also modeled the BLC last year. We believe the skill sets they have learned from this program set them up to succeed in time management and learning accountability. Just wanted to give some background to let you know why we feel they all succeeded with the quick change to remote in 4th quarter. But, we will be sending the kids to school for the following reasons. One, classes that will only be held in the building, especially for our senior and freshmen. Number two, the need for personal interaction to hear and see live, not just by video or reading some of the information. Number three, the rapport that happens in the classroom that expands the learning. Number four, our kids are very much rule followers. Now, to the hybrid model change request. Do not follow the current kindergarten pattern. Change the pattern to a Monday, Tuesday in a building with a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday remote for the first group and then Thursday, Friday in building with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday remote for the second group. Wednesday would be remote for both sessions with time for the building to be cleaned between sets of students. Time for the teacher to set up conferences with any students that need additional help. One last request for change. Level 1 only for full attendance. Combine Level 2 and 3 for the hybrid model. The request for the change in days in the hybrid model is to reduce the cross-contamination of classrooms. Rotating the children daily in the current kindergarten model just creates more vectors of infection. Our children will be there, masked up, no matter what level the district is following, but please realize procedures will change at home or how they will come into the house, where they leave their book bags, coats, and shoes, etc. The old rule, which tells you how old we are, of school clothes and home play clothes will be in effect. They will be constantly wiping down electronics that they touch daily. They will not be hugging their friends, sharing supplies. This will become the new norm until there is a vaccine." This is from Linda Lolo, 212 Emerald Ice Loop, Delaware. "To echo what a lot of other parents are voicing and saying, I'd like to urge the school board to reconsider the five-day-a-week option at a Level 2 emergency and switch to the hybrid schedule similar to what Hilliard is proposing. Correlating the school week to the emergency levels, which are fluctuating, is making it very difficult to plan and budget for childcare, either in or out of the home, an added challenge when also planning around full-time work schedules. Although I'd love for my kids to go back to school 100%, my concern is for the health and well-being of them, the teachers, and staff at OLSD. The hybrid schedule would allow for smaller numbers in the school, increased social distancing, and hopefully a lower likelihood of transmission at school until a vaccine can be created and distributed. My hope is that the school board will consider making this adjustment, at least going into this first semester, with the understanding that parents need time to react and plan for changes that impact their children, time, budgets, and lifestyle." Todd and Allison Wheaton, 1525 Will Hoyt Avenue, Lewis Center. "Number one, the hybrid attendance model should be used when the public emergency level for Delaware County is orange, Level 2. While daycares are required to operate at 50% capacity, it only seems right that schools should follow the same approach in an effort to reduce class sizes. Number two, the hybrid attendance model should be used consistently for the first semester. It's not fair to parents or students to have to bounce back and forth between attendance models depending on the public emergency level. We know the levels can change from week to week and switching from one model to the other in any given week will be challenging for most families. This would at least give us a chance to come up with a plan before the school year begins. If the public emergency level increases to purple, Level 4, then the virtual attendance model should be used. Number three, the district should not use the existing kindergarten schedule for the hybrid attendance model. Students should be on a two-day in-person, three-day remote learning schedule, which would be the same week to week, no alternating days every other week. This also allows families to plan ahead." Susanna Stedman, 7833 Royal Park Drive, Lewis Center. "I'm urging the school not to change the plan for school opening that the district originally proposed. Please keep in-person learning five days a week for Level 2. My son is on an IEP for his learning style and he needs in-person consistency for maximizing his learning. He will not learn to his best ability on the hybrid or virtual option. How will the district meet students' IEP goals and follow FAPE if you change the plan?"
At our time. Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Thank you, and that was a long time to be speaking. You did it very, very well. We're going to move into our presentations and hopefully answer some of these questions. Mrs. Davis, your department is the Communications Department. How many employees do you have in that department?
We currently have four.
How many emails did your department respond to yesterday?
I believe just yesterday.
Just yesterday?
Probably over 200. Probably over 200. We've received well over 1,500 emails easily in the past week.
And then how much of your employees' time was spent working on the Microsite versus answering emails? Do you know that off the top of your head?
You mean like updating the Microsite versus...
Were you able to get to the Microsite?
No, we weren't able to. So, if you weren't able to hear, we responded with no. We were not able to update anything on the Microsite because we've been responding to emails this week.
Okay, I think that's helpful for the public to hear. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move now into our discussion items and Mr. Wright, our Chief Administrative Officer, will be joining us with an update to our calendar. Mr. Wright, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Quickly, I'm presenting just our draft update, which you've seen in versions. Lamont, if you want to do the slides for me? Thank you. So, this information is a visual of the changes we've made to the calendar and we are only proposing changes inside of your prior-approved calendar. So, the very first day for teachers stays the same and the last day for teachers and students stays the same in May. But as we looked at it and we came up with, after extensive discussion, what would most likely be the most appropriate day of starting with students? We have established that as Monday, August 31st and for a variety of reasons. Some of them are, we felt that going longer or after Labor Day was too long. We did not want to split up a week somewhere in that week of August 31st and we felt starting any sooner did not give us the amount of time necessary to do a multitude of things and that is teacher preparation for understanding the new models, both the hybrid or remote if we have to move to that model. We also felt that it was an operational need to be able to obtain and assemble and distribute the numerous PPE requirements in order to operate on our modeling. And it allows us to take care of some additional trainings for how to spot and understand the symptoms of coronavirus and the process to follow should there be a suspected or possible case or a confirmed case. And those things are in conjunction with our health district. So, we arrived and again, a lot of conversation occurred between our team and Elaine Eddy and the Olentangie Teachers Association as we looked at the variables. And so, we arrived collectively at that date. So, as you look at the model and there's some color coding that's different, we have highlighted the first three days and we have highlighted that because if we are going to require... and we have highlighted that because if we are going to require or allow attendance by less than the full student body, we have to denote that on an approved calendar. An example of that is the very last student day. If you know from the graphic, we typically provide a two-hour early release for elementary students as part of our contract. We can only do that by signifying it on the calendar. So these three days, we are marking as a potential staggered start with phased-in orientation. We do not have the model spelled out, but we have reserved those three days for a potential model that we're still working through and talking with our building teams about. Should we not go the route of a phased-in or staggered start? We will start the hybrid schedule on August thirty-first. So we are in two paths, but for this approved calendar, we must denote if we are going to take less than the full expected student body on, on any given day. So that's why those are highlighted different. So then into the calendar, once we determined that seven student days would be lost in the first two weeks, we took a look at the overall picture, and we had an imbalance between the first and second semesters of over twenty days or a month of instruction. So we looked at how can we get to a balanced model? And to do that, we had to change the end dates for the first, second, and third quarters. So we have made those adjustments, and those are basically the only adjustments that we've made inside the calendar. We would call those pebbles versus a winter break, a spring break, being very heavy rocks that we're not talking about. So no break changes. All we're doing is moving the last day of quarters, which does impact contractually the teacher workday corresponding to each of those. So in the first quarter, we are moving the end date to the end of October. The last day of the first quarter would be Thursday, October twenty-ninth, with a workday on October thirtieth. The biggest change, and this is something that because of where we are, we were going back on something that's been in place for many years. We are actually going to wrap the first semester around winter break, and is for the sole purpose of providing equality to the two semesters. As we, as we considered this plan, we had to create a calendar that would work for any of the educational models that my colleagues will talk about. So if we are in remote, or if we are in hybrid, or we are in full in, this calendar works regardless of which attendance model we're doing. But we also wanted to make sure that if we ever get to what we call normal school, we didn't want the second semester education to be a month longer than the first semester education. And with this model, we now have equal amount of days in both semesters. Or I'm sorry, we are, we are well, we are much closer within our two or three days versus twenty. So winter break, and then we would finish the semester in the second week of January, January fourteenth, with a workday that also partners with Martin Luther King Jr., our traditional holiday break. And then third quarter would extend and finish at spring break. We would end on the last school day, or I'm sorry, March twenty-fifth, as the last student day, with a teacher workday Friday, the twenty-sixth, going into winter break. And then there are no changes to the calendar in April or May. So as we looked at that, that framework gave us a balance that we can then take a look at. Because it was one of our attendance models, we had to show you, while you're, while you're not approving it as a official calendar, we wanted to show you how the hybrid calendar fits in with that. Lamont, if you would advance the slide. So this, and it's in your support documentation, is the hybrid calendar model. And in this calendar, we do have exactly even number of days for our students in every quarter, which means for the, for the entire year. The only way that would change is if those days in yellow don't become phased in, and they become our hybrid, then we would most likely have one more day for our A group than our B group across the course of the year. I know it's been talked about in a lot of the letters that Mrs. Davis read and our community has shared. For, for those that are familiar with this, this is basically our kindergarten model with a couple of modifications. I worked very closely with Mrs. McMurray, who has been instrumental in creating and maintaining the kindergarten calendar for many years. So as we looked at, how does this work not only for our buildings? We had to make sure what can we accomplish through our transportation team. Mrs. Carter Evans and her team did an incredible amount of work preparing for a transportation model that we looked at for a while, and as we balanced a lot of the variables within that, just didn't feel it was as effective for fluidity between any attendance model we were on. So in conjunction with our transportation team and curriculum team, and a lot of conversations with our, our union, then we determined that our hybrid calendar draft, which is anchored in the calendar you approve, is, is color-coded this way. So both of these will be available and communicated as we go. Our hybrid model, again, to come up with a hybrid, you got to figure out who's coming on which of the two hybrid models. We had a statistical analysis done. Dr. Ian Way, he took a look at this. And originally, we did just a, an alpha split, A through K and L through Z. But we knew, just because of the, the reality of our district, there are many families that have students with different last names living in the same house. We wanted consistency for our families, so Dr. Way also applied a same household accommodation model, and that will take students with last names that are in the two different groups. They will match them to, or I'm sorry, two different alphabets or different last names across. They will go with the last name that appears earliest in the alphabet. So what we end up having is there are a number of students, and I did the quick calculations today, and we're, we're about three hundred to three hundred and fifty total students, K twelve, that would move from the B group to the A group. Now, the interesting thing with this is we were trying to get as even a split as possible, and we're trying to get a split in the district. So K twelve, we wanted to find what's the best line, and Ian figured out it was between A and, A and K and L through Z. So when he added this family accommodation or household accommodation, we ended up with a forty-nine point seven on our A days and fifty point three percent of our student body on the B days. It's a difference of one hundred and forty students. So it is absolutely the cleanest model that we can come up with. It's one that allows for the kind of flexibility we're going to need as we evaluate our processes going through. So those are the two calendars and some explanation behind why we arrived at this proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the models.
We knew you had some.
I just need to reiterate that there are no changes to Christmas break, the holiday break, or spring break, or the end of the school year, because that will be asked a million times.
That is correct. So no, no break changed, no established break changed. We, we moved the end-of-quarter dates. We're the only internal movements on this calendar.
Well, you've certainly taken a lot of things into consideration as, you know, it's, it's. I commend you for that work. I, I do have one statement, and that is, I know last year when we ended up having to let emergency go remote, frequently it was asked, how many calamity days do we have left? And so our school day is longer than several of our other neighboring district's school days. So we had, I thought the number was over, it was high, right?
We started the year about the mid twenties is our low school, what we have kind of to work with.
So do we have the, we still have, we have a little bit different actual school days, correct, because of the?
Starting later.
Starting later. But we still have, we have that covered within our hours met, correct?
That is correct, and at, at a very conservative estimate, we have at minimum, at any building, we still have seven calamity days, and it's most likely higher, but that is the, that is us being very critical and saying, oh, we can't count this, we can't count that. So we, we easily have a minimum of seven additional calamity days should we need to deal with any kind of items. And again, if that's a partial closure, or if that's weather-related for any other reason.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions.
That was good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I know a lot of work and time went into that. Dr. Fettie, please join us at the podium. Dr. Fettie is our Chief Academic Officer, and he will be doing the first reading of our Board Policy Updates.
Good evening. I'm presenting three policies to you this evening. These policies have been circulated through our Board's Policy Committee. You can take this off, I forget. They have been circulated through our Board's Policy Committee for feedback. So what we're presenting to you tonight is a proposal for what should be adopted. We are deleting Policy Fifty-Five Seventeen Oh Two Sexual Violence to replace it with a new policy, Twenty-Two Sixty-Six Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in District Programs or Activities. It's on the advice of legal counsel, federal requirements have caused for a revision of Title Nine policies. So that's a necessary policy change to comply with federal law. And then we're also presenting the use of face masks slash coverings as a new policy for this year to support the wearing of face coverings in school during the school day. Any questions?
Dr. White and I are on the Policy Committee, so we were able to read the policy. Do any other members have questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, welcome to the podium Peggy McMurray. She is our Director of Curriculum, and she will be presenting our remote learning plan.
Thank you. Can I have the next slide, or do I need to change it? There it is. Thank you very much. Thank you again for allowing me to be here this evening. I appreciate it. The plan that I will be presenting to you is a remote learning plan, and this will allow Olentangy to move between our different attendance models and therefore comply with House Bill One Sixty-four. For this purpose, remote learning is defined as when learning occurs when the learner and educator or source of information are separated by time and/or distance, and therefore cannot meet in a traditional classroom setting. So there are different components of this plan. There are six requirements that we need to address, and I, it's pretty small print, but I think that you have access to it, and I've seen it. What we need to address in our plan is how student learning needs will be determined and documented, methods for determining competency, grading credit, and promoting students, attendance requirements, including how the district will document participation and learning opportunities, how student growth, or I'm sorry, how student progress will be monitored. And then the next slide, please. Thank you, Lamont. How equitable access to quality instruction will be provided, and description of the professional development activities to be offered to teachers. And this plan provides assurance that we are able to meet the criteria in all areas as we move forward through our different attendance models. This plan needs to be approved by you, and then I will be submitting it to O D E, and they will be posting it on their websites. As necessary, we are permitted to amend this learning plan. So as we find that we need to do some minor tweaks and changes, we are permitted to do that.
What questions? Okay, so this, this plan has not been shared on our Microsite yet because it's not approved, correct? And I, it's, it's got a lot in it. I, I would hope that we will get a lot more like F A Qs regarding this.
Absolutely.
And there has been an extreme amount of questions around foreign language. When can we look for answers around that?
Thank you. I know that that has been a hot topic that I've received lots of questions on as well. And we are currently looking at different resources so that we can provide foreign language for our students who have opted into C D L, committed distance learning.
Go ahead, Mr. Wright.
I don't know if you recognize.
Go ahead.
What are we doing, or what's the administration doing to ensure there are more consistent or more consistent rigor in instruction in a hybrid environment? Because my experience in the spring across two middle schools and a high school, they were all very different. Some very teacher-dependent, some subject-dependent, but certainly the expectations were very different by student, or at least my experience as a parent, therefore by, by class. What do we do to ensure that we don't, you know, take a step backwards in the rigor of the curriculum?
Right, that's a wonderful question, and our Back-to-School Committee comprising of teachers and administrators, as well as representation from our O T A, have been meeting since the end of May, and we have several people involved on that. One of the things that we looked at were our survey results that were administered throughout the spring and summer. And we know that consistency is something that we are striving for. So our technology, instructional technology folks and curriculum folks have been working all summer on expectations for what a Schoology course would look like and what types of experiences we expect our teachers to offer for our students. We have lots of documents created, ready for teachers to review and to use, and it's our intent that there is greater consistency and that, you know, we've spent a lot of time this summer talking about what that means and looks like.
I think even on the flip side, academic integrity.
Yes.
Right, you've got.
So, yeah, and I'm sorry, Dr. Fettie, to steal some of your thunder.
Jack will go into that in greater detail when we talk, when he talks about that.
What, what teachers are we using? Because I've read that Upper Arlington, Bexley, Bloom Carroll, Big Walnut, they're not even using their own teachers. So where are we getting our teachers?
We are using our Olentangy teachers, and I would presume that Mr. Meyer will be talking about that during his portion.
Okay, and Mr., are you guys going to cover the, how we're going to get computers to kids who need them? Okay, that was my other question. And then what is the expectation of the student? You know, if they're an elementary student, do they turn the computer on at nine o'clock and get to work? Or, you know, a high school student turn it on at seven twenty and do their work? How, how do we do that?
Dr. Fettie will be.
Those are great questions. This, this, go ahead, Jack.
Well, it's part of the remote.
This remote learning plan is a requirement from House Bill One Sixty-four and O D E to allow us to take attendance in remote environments when school is not in traditional session. So this is not our back-to-school plan that Mark and I will be talking about coming up. This is just the minimum requirements to assure that we are hitting six areas required by law, that we are saying that we will be addressing these things that allows us to take attendance of students when they're home. In the fourth quarter, there was no attendance. The governor's order canceled it. So you're, you're asking great questions that we plan to address, but I also know that Peggy wasn't planning to answer all of them.
But how did I do?
You do.
Okay, great. That's all that matters.
I'll run out of things to say.
I don't think so.
We have questions. Well, it sounds like they have plenty, Dr. Fettie, so it's okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, so I guess that brings us to this evening's main feature. And the one Olentangy Back Together, Back Together Twenty Twenty Plan. Welcome back to the podium, Mr. Wright.
Well, thank you again, and thank you, thank you, Mrs. Davis, for reading all those comments. Thank you to all the community members who, who shared all of those public participation comments. And as she said, we will make sure that you have copies of all of those to review. I think it was a good example of what we've been experiencing for the last two months as we've been trying to plan for this, coming back together. You know, obviously, our goal was to try to get everybody back in. And so, you know, because that's really very, very important. Safety is also very, very important, and we're trying to balance all of those things out as we developed this plan. So let's get at it. I'm going to start by reviewing. I'm going to start by reviewing, first of all, where we were on July 13th. And, you know, we shared this slide with the community that we had Level 1 and Level 2 Public Emergency was a daily attendance model, Level 3 Public Emergency was pretty much a hybrid attendance model, and Level 4 Public Emergency was going to be our virtual attendance model, and that we offered a committed distance learning model for those people wanting to do committed distance learning. Initially, we said that that was going to be a year-long commitment. We changed that based on community feedback to a semester-long commitment. And I think that was important. The other question we're getting consistently about the committed distance learning is the lack of foreign language. And I want to reiterate, Peggy started to say that foreign language will be available in the committed distance learning model. We have a few options to address that. We are finalizing what those options are, but it will be available in that committed distance learning model. You know, we created those four original models, three to fluctuate between a daily, a hybrid, and a remote, you know, at the time, given the information that we had. I interact with superintendents from all over the area, and everyone at that time was committed to Level 1 and Level 2 being a daily attendance model. Delaware County, Franklin County, that's where everybody was heading on that, in that early July timeframe, as we were waiting for more information to come out and how things were going. Everyone was leaning towards the hybrid attendance model in a Level 3 Public Emergency and the virtual attendance model in a Level 4 Public Emergency. I do want to reiterate, though, those indicators are one data point for us. They give us guidance, and maybe it's a mistake for us to create this type of chart because it does kind of give people the impression that we will automatically move from one level to another, given what's happening. And again, if that, if we made a mistake in that, and that causes confusion, I apologize for that, but, you know, it was just a starting point from a data set. Because there are a lot of other factors that could go into this. And as we continue to, since we've announced that, and we've continued to collaborate with the Delaware County General Health District, and I appreciate the fact that we are very close to Franklin County and that we do have one street in the district that's actually in Franklin County, but we work with the Delaware County General Health District on the risk levels for our county, and we reviewed the 2,000 questions and comments and feedback on the Microsite, you know. We've continued to develop what learning looks like in each of these attendance models as well as our committed distance learning. So, you know, when we initially shared these plans, our, we said, you know, there's two things that matter to us, that's facilitating maximum learning for every student and ensuring the safety and health of our staffs. Those are our two top priorities, and that continues to be the case as we continue to examine this moving forward. Again, that was July 13th. We're now at July 28th, mere 15 days later. And a lot of things have changed in 15 days. So what I'm going to share moving forward is that we are modifying our plan to, that we've determined it's in the best interest of our staff and our students to adjust our attendance models, as you can see here on the screen. The daily attendance model will be in place if we move as the starting point as the Level 1 Public Emergency. We're going to go to a daily attendance model. Five days in. The hybrid attendance model is going to be used if we are at a county Level 2 or 3, and then the remote attendance model is in that Level 4 Public Emergency state. What we discovered here in the last 15 days is that the most fluidity appears to be between Levels 2 and 3. And in conversation with the Delaware County General Health District today, the Franklin County Public Health officials, and the Columbus Public Health officials, there is a lot of disagreement about the indicators and what moves an indicator. And the Franklin County Public Health Director said in our meeting today that red in Franklin County looks significantly different than red in Delaware County, and that we have to continue to use these risk levels as one data point, one piece of information, as we continue to try to move this forward. So in this scenario, where we are today on July 28th, we believe that the beginning of the year should start in the hybrid model. It will allow us to provide an environment for our students to become acclimated to the return to school in a safer manner. 50% attendance, as Mr. Wright described, or 49.7 and 50.3. God, we've got to get Dr. Way to work on those numbers. It could be a little more accurate. Will give us an opportunity to do social distancing at six feet, to work with smaller ratios of students. The hybrid learning model, we believe, provides, gives us, appears to provide the best consistency for students and staff in order to facilitate maximum learning for everyone K through 12. You know, there's been a lot of debate about the three feet that we put into the daily attendance model. And I really question or wonder about that public emergency Level 1, and wonder how we'll ever be out of it. Or if we have a flu outbreak, per se, maybe we'll be in a public emergency Level 1. But the reality is, if we have to do six feet of social distancing all the time, all the time, we can't ever be in all five days. So the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Delaware County General Health District advised us in that daily attendance model, if we're going to come back at all, all five days, then three feet of social distancing with masks is acceptable. They informed us that that meets their guidelines. And again, there are conflicting data or information about what are the proper guidelines. So we think it is important, at some point in time, to have full in-person attendance in school at some point. But I want to reiterate for people is that if we have to abide by a strict six-foot social distancing guideline all the time, we won't be able to ever have all-in attendance this year. So we have to be flexible with that. We think that this is the best decision for Olin Tangi. It makes the better sense to continue on a hybrid model. We're going to continue to model or monitor data. We may have to close a particular school if a school is impacted. We'll talk more about what those traits, what the tracing looks like if we do have a positive case, and some of those things here is another, later on in the presentation. You know, at the end of the day, this school year will not look similar to any other school year. We're going to come back together in the best way possible and navigate needed changes and obstacles, and also take advantage of opportunities for growth and positive change. Want to make sure I say very strongly for the community, what remains the same is our commitment to provide a high-quality education for our students and a top-notch work environment for our staff. We'll do those things to the best of our ability every single day. So with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Fetti to talk about the academic portions of this plan, and then I'll reserve the right to interrupt as appropriate.
Yes. Wipe down that.
Good evening again. So this graphic should look pretty familiar. This is what's been on the Microsite, what we introduced a few weeks ago. I'm going to take you through the graphics and each of the highlights of our attendance models again, provide you some updates of where we are today with those models, and hopefully answer a lot of the questions along the way that I know you have, but I'm sure... Please feel free to ask additional questions if I don't cover anything. With the daily attendance model, in this model, to be clear, all grades, and grades 1, all students in grades 1 through 12 would attend every day, Monday through Friday, in a traditional week. Our kindergarten students would attend two or three days per week in accordance with their traditional schedule. Kindergarten in our district is a part-time program, and it is always on a hybrid model in that effect. So in the daily attendance model, the kindergarten attendance would be as it typically is, which is Monday, Friday, every other Wednesday, excuse me, Monday, Thursday, every other Wednesday, or Tuesday, Friday, every other Wednesday. In this daily attendance model, all special education services would be delivered in the school, just like they were in 2019, remember those days? But with more PPE. The main point Mark already hit on with this model is this is predicated around three feet of social distancing with masks. In this model, we will continue, like I said, offer special education services, gifted services. I mentioned the PPE. All of our specials, extracurriculars, co-curriculars, we intend to offer everything as much as we can, and right now, all of those things appear to be on track as much as possible. This would be a normal-ish, the most normal of the options, that we would be able to achieve, and therefore the one with the fewest questions. The hybrid model that we discussed a little more tonight is, the goal of the hybrid model is to achieve 50% attendance in the school on a daily basis to reduce crowding, to try to get at six feet social distancing whenever possible. Mr. Wright already talked about the alphabetical split. We are following our kindergarten schedule. It will be the same for kindergarten students as it is during the daily attendance model, but then grades 1 through 12 would adopt what is, by many of us, known as the kindergarten schedule with alternating days. Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Friday, with an alternating Wednesday. The Back-to-School Committee looked at every other possible model, seemingly, to decide what would be best for grades 1 through 12. I think one or more of our public participation comments suggested clustering the students so that they attend on Monday and Tuesday, but not maybe on Thursday and Friday. So our Back-to-School Committee looked at every possible model, considered the merits to each, and ultimately determined that the kindergarten schedule that we use currently is best because it provides equal attendance days, and it does not leave a student at home for an extended period of time when we could be bringing them in on every other day. So that one day's instruction can lead into one day's of at-home learning, can be followed up immediately with another day of instruction. So that's why we landed on the kindergarten model. We are adding more, so a question that will come up is how are we able to accommodate social distancing of three feet and six feet in the kindergarten classroom if the kindergarten attendance looks the same in the daily attendance as it does in the hybrid attendance? To do that, we are adding more sections of kindergarten to reduce the size of each group so that we can satisfy social distancing and still be able to provide students with multiple days of attendance at kindergarten. An alternative to this plan would be to split our kindergarten classes into smaller sections and provide them with only one day of in-person instruction, or to provide them two half-days of in-person instruction. Two half-days would have a significant transportation cost, more than double the cost of adding the additional sections of kindergarten, and two half-days is also still only a complete day's worth of instruction, whereas we are achieving two or three days of instruction for kindergarten students with this model. So we're very confident that this is the best model for our kindergarten students as well as grades 1 through 12. Yes?
What's the staffing implication to more sections?
So we are working through that currently. We have to back out our committed distance learning students, and that is still open. The enrollment is still open of that. We also have withdrawals over summer currently coming out and new enrollments happening. But right now, our estimate is around $170,000 in staffing, I believe. Am I speaking out of turn?
We plan to use that with long-term subs, certified subs, as opposed to hiring full staff with benefits.
Yeah. How long are you locked into a, how long are you locked into a long-term sub if first semester's hybrid, second semester goes back? Can you release that staff?
Yes, can.
Yes. Todd's answer is yes.
Good.
In this hybrid attendance model, at-home learning days will be asynchronous. It's a big word, I want to make sure people understand that. We, in our at-home model, our teachers will not be live on the computer during the day because they will be teaching half of the students in the classroom. Student work will be independent, and every class will be accessible through Schoology. So I'm going to address consistency throughout this presentation, and that's one element of consistency that will be improved, is every class, every student will be accessing their at-home learning through Schoology, which was not consistently used in the fourth quarter. We will be publishing guidelines for teachers to follow for timing and quantity of work. We're working on those. During the at-home learning days for the hybrid model, students will be reading, they will be practicing what was learned the day before, or preparing for what is coming in the following day of attendance, of physical attendance. We simply can't have the teachers be in two places at once. The exception here may be for students with disabilities. Even in a hybrid model, we are bound to Section 7 of the IEP, and some services may be provided virtually in order to meet Section 7. Those decisions are individual decisions to be worked out between the intervention specialist and the parents, though. So I know that there's a lot of frustration from parents about we want to know what's going to happen for our child on an IEP. A lot of that is an individual conversation between the intervention specialists, who return to work on the 17th of August, and the parents. So we are preparing for those conversations. Our People's Services Department and the supervisors are identifying solutions, but we are still working through that.
I want to reiterate, though, this is... I mean, because obviously, that was a big decision point of what the days were going to be, and, you know, some districts are going full weeks on and off, some districts are going two days on, three days off, and they're two and two in the cleaning day, and those kind of things. We clean every day. So giving up a day of instruction to clean, for us, we just didn't think that was prudent. We'd rather have the day of instruction and hold our maintenance custodial staff to clean properly every single day. So I think that, you know, again, I get the fact that if two, two days in a row you have the same kids, maybe that could mitigate some spread, but we believe we clean well enough every day to mitigate the spread, and that the academic benefits of following this schedule outweigh what we would gain by some other point. Dr. Fetti, Mrs. McMurray, Elaine Eddy, and the Back-to-School Committee that consisted of, how many members?
Well, I haven't counted recently.
But, you know, all grade levels, kindergarten, I mean, elementary, middle, and high school, and again, they vetted that very, very thoroughly.
I think we have probably 40 individuals involved in total.
And it's a great committee that did a lot, did a lot of good work all summer, and so we really believe this is the best model for us going forward on the hybrid attendance.
And they're still working. Had a meeting today, have another meeting on Thursday. We have a lot more to do. So in this hybrid model, Mr. Wright again addressed a lot of the split, 49.7, 53.3. But again, in the hybrid model, we want to be clear that special education services, gifted services will continue within this model. When the students are in school, the social distancing will be six feet, is our goal when possible. The PPE will still be prevalent. We will continue to offer our special classes, our Unified Arts, our electives, co-curriculars. We're going to continue to offer mental health services, emotional health services. Our school counselors will continue to be available in each of these models. And in each of the models, each school will have a COVID and a non-COVID clinic. So there are... So there are certain aspects of schooling that we are tending to in each of these models that are kind of non-negotiables, that we can't fudge with. And some, some people feel, we've gotten a lot of questions that people are assuming things might go away. Well, now we're not going to do special education. That's not the case. We're going to continue to offer those services in these models. So as we're getting into hybrid, let's talk about live streaming a little bit. Because while in this model, our teachers will not be able to be live on a regular basis with the students, but we've been asked often, couldn't we just livestream the classes and the kids at home could watch? Well, that makes sense in theory, but it would not be an effective or enjoyable practice of learning. Our technology issues tonight, for example, are not the same technology that we're using in distance learning and virtual learning. We've created here effectively an open system of television broadcast and, and education in the classrooms. We have a closed system, but, so we're confident in the ability of our technology to allow students and teachers to interact. But video streaming, live streaming, a teacher teaching a class makes the assumption that the quality in the experience would be up to expectations and those would be unrealistic expectations. Video and sound quality are major issues. We have classrooms that are 900 square feet in size and just setting up a laptop pointed out at the room is not a realistic way of accurate, effectively capturing video and audio. Our teachers are also very mobile and they don't only lecture. Even in a COVID environment, maintaining social distancing with their PPE on, they will be around the classroom. They won't be standing in one place as perhaps teachers did when we were in school. The lesson, the, the at-home learners would not be able to ask questions or receive feedback or participate in classroom discussions. The lesson being delivered that they would allegedly be watching would be the same one that they received the previous day in that same setting. So, in, in the hybrid model, it just, it's not the best use of their time. I simply cannot endorse live streaming of classes as an effective use of educational time because it's not a plan that sets our students or our teachers up for success. And we want to have plans that are setting us up for success.
Around the live stream, like I said, where the camera was would, would be important because we're not legally allowed to show students in class, are we?
Absolutely. There, there are other privacy issues that would be, that we would have to address, that would make it very challenging.
Talk about PPE for a minute?
Yeah.
I, I can't ask you a question without taking my mask off.
Yeah, it's nice to be up here.
How, how could, how are we expecting teachers to lecture with a mask for 40 minutes?
Well, hopefully they're not lecturing for 40 minutes.
It's been a while since I've been at high school.
Being in front of a classroom, managing a classroom for 40 or 50 minutes consistently with a mask on is not comfortable. I mean, you're experiencing it now. It's, it's a challenge, but it's something that our teachers can do and they will find ways to make it work.
What if they choose not to?
So the policy that was read tonight allows anyone to take a necessary brief break when they are not within, you know, six feet of anyone else. Instructionally, sometimes it's necessary for a teacher to show their mouth. Phonics instruction, for example, working with a student who may have a disability that we're trying to de-escalate, sometimes the mask isn't going to be helping us in that endeavor. So the teachers have professional discretion to show their mouth when they need to, as long as they're maintaining a safe distance. We're also providing shields which do not replace a mask in terms of the safety, but can provide an extra barrier. We're also providing table dividers that can be taught through at times. But if the question is if a teacher flat-out refuses, we have staff discipline, just like we have student discipline, for insubordination. So the board's policy will be a board policy that has to be followed and any staff member or student who is not following the policy, we will follow our regular discipline progression for that individual. But just, you know, willful ongoing opposition is not an option.
And again, I think if they, with a face shield on at the front of the room, more than six feet, how are we going to space out classrooms, that'll probably be the norm more than, but the mask will come on if they come within six feet of someone.
So now's a good time to also talk about teacher professional development. So as we've shared, our teachers will be in attendance back at work starting on August 17th. And the 17th through the 28th will be focused on preparation of the physical school environment as well as preparation for instruction in each of our attendance models. All of our teachers learned a lot from the fourth quarter. We all learned a lot from the fourth quarter. Teachers have been very actively participating in OPDA classes over summer, addressing areas that they know that, you know, they could see what's coming. They know that this is a possibility, so they've already been sharpening the saw, so to speak. But we will be delivering professional development to them around instructional practices, best practices during those first teacher workdays. Teachers are going to be provided with a menu of PD using our technology programs and other instructional best practices to use in virtual and flipped classrooms that they will be allowed to self-identify and work with their principal and their colleagues to say, what is it that I need to make me the most effective teacher for my kids? So as you probably experienced, teachers had different level of expertise with, say, Schoology. So we're not going to mandate four hours of Schoology training for every teacher when some teachers have been immersed in Schoology. A teacher who hasn't will get that training. So there's going to be an element of teacher choice that's intended to allow all of our teachers to get the skills that they individually need to be most effective in the classroom. There's going to be then an element of mandatory PD that everyone's going to get around best practices to know and implement when teaching students on a computer or when teaching with a mask on, for example. In addition to the time that they're going to spend during those workdays and preparing that physical environment to create a learning space that's conducive to learning, we're used to doing learning a certain way with 25 kids in a classroom and small reading groups that we're going to have to modify. We're still going to be able to do reading groups, but they're going to look different. So our teachers are going to have to create a classroom environment that allows their instruction to be effective in the classroom as well as on the computer. Our back-to-school committee is talking about all of these currently. That's the phase that we're in. So we had to start big and we're working down granularly. So today's meeting, we introduced our first draft of the menu that's going to go to the teachers to see how are we doing so far with, you know, instructional tech administrators, our curriculum administrators have been working all summer on developing Gobs of resources that are very high quality. Gobs is more than oodles. How do you like that? I also said fudge earlier. You let that one go? Virtual learning now. So our virtual attendance model. This is where all students are learning from home on a regular basis. The classes in the virtual model will have synchronous components that the hybrid model at-home learning classes will not have. In this model, we're not asking teachers to be in two places at once. We're asking them to be in the virtual place all the time. Well, you know, when they're working. Teachers will have classes that are synchronous and asynchronous in certain components, depending on what they're, what they're putting out for students to do. But the teachers will interact with students daily through videos and chats. Students will receive regular feedback on their learning. Again, Schoology will be the hub for all of this. So students and parents will know how to access and understand what their child is being asked to do on a daily basis. A student will be able to know how to access what they're being asked to do on a daily basis and will have a means of communicating with the teacher in that same platform to expedite communication as, as, as quickly as possible. All classes that exist in the daily attendance and hybrid attendance model will transition into the virtual attendance model. So if I have Mrs. Patrick for, as my fourth grade teacher in daily attendance, Mrs. Patrick is my fourth grade teacher in hybrid, and Mrs. Patrick is my fourth grade teacher in virtual. Our teachers stay consistent. Our class placements stay consistent in all of those models. I don't want people to get confused with the committed distance learning model. The virtual attendance is a continuation of Option 1, which is our three attendance models that will move between as necessary. In the virtual attendance model, science classes, music classes, art classes will all be modified to accommodate an online environment. Some of those will be more challenging than others, but they will be modified to accommodate the online environment and we will continue instruction in each of those areas in the virtual model if we have to adopt that attendance model. Again, students on IEPs and 504 plans will receive their services virtually in the virtual attendance model. And the specifics of each of those plans will be worked out through the IEP with the team, with the intervention specialist and the parents. Our biggest challenge in the virtual learning model is that not every student has a device. We surveyed our families in the spring and that showed that 25% of our households have multiple children sharing a single device for learning on a daily basis. We will, again, recruit, solicit the availability of district devices for homes in need. Not every home takes us up on that option, though. Some will continue to use one shared device and that is not something that unfortunately we can address right now. So teachers will be challenged with the fact that not all of their students will be available the moment that they want them to be. If, if a second, if a high school second-period teacher says we are going to meet online during our second period and a middle school first-period teacher says we are going to meet online during our first period, those are the same times. And a middle school and a high school student, if they are sharing a device, come into conflict. That does not mean that we can't offer those opportunities, but we have to be flexible with those opportunities. And we can't punish students if they're not able to attend one of those opportunities because of their lack of a home device. So when we are comparing ourselves with other districts who have one-to-one plans where every student is sent home with a device guaranteed, we need, we do need to keep that in mind and meter our expectations. So again, within the virtual attendance model, to the extent that we are allowed to, our special, our extracurriculars would continue, our co-curriculars would continue, our electives would still be offered. I mean, if we're in virtual attendance, I would imagine there would be great modifications to extracurricular activities by public health officials. But just in and of itself, you know, our intent would be to offer them until we're, until we're told we can't. We will also transition all of our mental and emotional health services to virtual. That, that includes not only our school counselors, but our other service providers from Centaro and Ohio State. We'll also continue to work on what we're doing right now to define the quantity of schoolwork for each level so students and parents can expect what they should be doing at home. You know, one of the things I think we learned very clearly in the fourth quarter was expected time and actual time are two different things. When you're in the classroom, the teacher has the ability to redirect students, modify lessons on the fly, keep a student on task. Our parents at home are working. Our students are being asked to self-direct in some cases, which makes work longer. So we're going to be able to, we are, we will acknowledge that and we'll try to mitigate that as much as possible in this environment. Okay, the committed distance learning model. So this is our alternative option. This is for families who want to opt out of the three attendance models that we just discussed. Registration for this model is open through August 2nd and I'll, I'll address that deadline in a moment. But first, one of the most frequent questions we get is what will an online learning day look like in this model? Students will be required to check in daily and attend scheduled meetings with their teachers and classmates. I had two questions today from parents who have different reasons for needing to return to India in the fall semester and that will take a full semester. And they've asked, can we do committed distance learning from India? Legally, they're enrolled in our district and they, they could pursue that option, but what they're not aware of or hadn't thought about yet is the time difference. We are going to be interacting in real time with students. Every student will be assigned a teacher. Every student will have classmates that they will be interacting with virtually. So to be successful in that environment would require you to be operating on the same time zone as the district. So I, I see that as a very unrealistic expectation for parents to put on their children and I'm advising them against it. But that's, that, that helps us to maybe understand what the online learning day will look like. All student work will be completed on the computer, but teachers will be working a traditional day in terms of their hours. Students should be expected or should expect to be engaging with their teachers over the course of those hours. We, we'll have more defined schedules soon on what that might look like and what the parameters are. But if you're thinking in terms of a traditional school day right now, that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with. Hey, Lamont, I turned off here if you could help me. Or maybe I just need to do something. We are not just placing kids into an online program, I want to be clear about. We are assigning students an Olin Tangi teacher. We want this to be an authentic, albeit new, Olin Tangi experience. Because we are placing our teachers with our students, we have to maintain our August 2nd deadline for enrollment into the committed distance learning option. We need to know who the students are so that we can assign our teachers out of our school buildings and then we can rebuild our classrooms, our class schedules in our school buildings for the students that remain in time for school to start on the 31st. Students from the same school will be co-horted together as much as possible. So if there are 25 students that sign up from Allen Creek Elementary School, 4th grade, you can anticipate that those 25 Allen Creek Elementary 4th grade students would be in the same class. They may be with students from another school, though, because if 12 students, 4th grade, Allen Creek, sign up and 12 from Arrowhead sign up, they might end up in the same committed distance learning class. But we will be cohorting students together based on their school as much as possible. All students will be assigned an Olin Tangi teacher who has experience in licensure ideally in their respective areas where the students are teaching. When we started this, we looked at all possibilities. What if we can only staff committed distance learning with high school teachers and we need to provide education for elementary students? There are licensure limitations there. Apex and Edgenuity, the programs that we are, we would rely on in those cases, help us mitigate those problems. If we're fortunate enough to be able to match every student with a licensed teacher in the virtual model, those programs will be needed far, far less. And it looks like that's the way we're going, but we have to get all the students registered first. And that's tough for parents because they want to know all the answers before they sign up. And we're getting them as many as we can, but we are still creating it. Yes?
Staffing-wise, depending on how many people sign up, we're going to take teachers out of traditional classroom into a virtual setting. Is that on a voluntary basis? And then, say I've been in a building for 10 years. I opt out to do virtual for a semester, do I lose my spot back at my old building?
So we, we did a optional kind of declare your interest in becoming a committed distance learning teacher that our human resources department ran. That process is closed. So we know the teachers that are interested. We will select primarily, if not exclusively, from that pool of teachers, but we will ultimately be selecting the teachers that we place into committed distance learning. They cannot unilaterally just make a move into that placement. The teachers who end up in committed distance learning are not guaranteed their exact same spot back in their school building because our enrollment changes year to year and those, we, we can rarely have ever guarantee that.
Yeah, we're going to do our best to place them back in our current building. However, based on normal circumstances every year, like enrollment fluctuations, we won't be able to guarantee it. Next year, we're opening a new elementary, for example. So we know some of our elementary enrollments will reduce. So therefore, teachers won't go back to those elementaries possibly.
And we've been very upfront with the teachers who, who declared are aware of that.
But they will have a job. It, it just will not, it, we can't guarantee it's the same. Yeah.
And then, we're pretty close to August 3rd, how the numbers shape it up in terms of people signing up for committed, teachers volunteering.
So on the student end, we're around 2,000 students right now signed up for committed distance learning. distance learning. About 60% of those students are K-5 elementary students and the other 40% are 6 through 12. A few more, I think, middle schoolers than high schoolers currently. But so it's just over 1,000 elementary kids. I think it was 1,100, 1,200 today when I looked and then, yes?
I was, I know, I don't know if the public knows this, but you know, contractually, we have ratios.
Correct.
In the class. So it doesn't look like we will, I would think, and I'm guessing here, you'll have to correct me as the professional, but online instructor might be able to handle more students. I don't know if they can or can't, I'm not a distant learner, but what does, you know, we don't know what that ratio will be yet because we don't have our final student numbers, but what will the classroom ratio?
So our ratio remains what has been contractually negotiated.
And that's an across-the-district grade level ratio.
Okay.
So we're in good shape with regards to that. And we, you know, just, excuse me, it'll be a balance of, you know, we may end up with a second grade class of 26 back in a building or remotely, depending on how the numbers just shake out. And, you know, traditionally, just to keep working through that. And again, that's where it comes back to that August 2nd date is it's just going to, it's going to take us some time, you know, especially rebuilding high school schedules, middle school schedules, because, you know, if we move a person out for, into committed distance learning and then now they were previously assigned 125 students, now those 125 students have to all be rescheduled into something else. So there's just ripples all throughout. It's going to take time between August 2nd and August 31st to get that all done.
Did you, Mr. O'Brien asked, did you have a number of teachers you wanted to share that signed up?
We're at 100, I think today we're, I'm going to say 170, but some of those, so we're 165-plus teachers.
So in this model, students will receive instruction from their teacher over the computer in real time. They'll also be watching videos, they'll be reading, they'll be demonstrating their learning in a variety of ways, similar to what they do in a traditional classroom. This is not a asynchronous online program. We're not just plugging kids into a computer and letting them be independent. We're supporting them, we're building community within the online classes. Again, I'm calling it an authentic Olentangy experience. It's not a generic online experience. The last point I wanted to make regarding the teachers was that students, while we will cohort the students from schools together, students should not expect to have a teacher who's from their home school building. It could happen, but that's not likely to be something that will be consistently happening. Regarding course offerings for committed distance learning, there are limitations within this model regarding what can be offered. This is no different than when a student chooses to enroll in the STEM program or DACC or College Credit Plus, especially at the secondary level, choice creates conflicts. That's always the case. We are doing, as we always do, whatever we can to minimize those conflicts, but they will not be entirely mitigated. I've been using our jewelry-making elective at the high school level. I'm confident that with enough time, we could develop an online jewelry-making elective, but I don't have enough time right now to do it and I don't feel that it's critical for the success of committed distance learning. And I don't feel like there's a online, we haven't identified an online provider to do that. So there are going to be some limitations. AP courses are tough to staff in certain areas. AP computer science, we have a tough time staffing those in the building. So I'm not sure that we're going to be able to offer AP computer science in a committed distance learning model. We're doing everything we can to identify what's possible. We currently have 11 AP courses that we will be able to offer and we'll hope to add to that, but the environment does create constraints. We do intend to offer honors courses if student enrollment and course selection necessitates it. You may have gotten some questions about accelerated math 7, 8 at the middle school. We will offer accelerated math 7, 8, which is an accelerated math course that students take in 7th grade. Ms. McMurray addressed that, you know, originally we didn't have a solution for world language and we've identified a solution that we will be able to offer and we'll put that on the microsite as soon as it's finalized. One conflict that's tough to solve is our co-curriculars. Band, for example, requires a physical presence in class for learning as well as a physical presence for rehearsals. Co-curriculars and committed distance learning are somewhat counterintuitive. Co-curriculars require interaction within the school. Committed distance learning is for people who don't want to interact within the school. So those are some of the conflicts that exist, trying to give you a picture of what we're working through. Yes?
When you're talking about at the high school level, when you have all these course selections, you know, I think there's seven, how many classes in a day?
Eight academic.
Eight academic classes. Do you envision that being from 7:20 until 2:15 or whatever the time is now? So now we're moving on to AP science and now we're going to move on to honors English and, or are they going to be, you know, how are they going to coordinate that if a teacher, if the English teacher says, "I want to do a group reading at 9:00 AM"?
Yeah. So we will have a schedule of sorts at the secondary level so that we can accommodate group meetings. I don't know that I can give you a specific enough answer just yet on what that'll look like because we haven't got that far. We've got to get the rest of the enrollments in. But I'll tell you this, the highest, my first step after the registration closes will be to start engaging the school counselors and who these students are and what their requested courses were back in February and how we can transition those students. So I anticipate that our, at the secondary level especially, our school counselors will have to touch, talk to every individual kid about how can we make this work and communicate with our soon-to-be, you know, populated committed distance learning teachers about how do we get all these kids scheduled for what they need. We have a model that we can follow with how students transition from our high school to Oasis, but it's not the same. So we're starting with some knowledge, but we are going to have to, there's going to be some trial and error, you know, we're going to do our best to get it as perfect as we can.
And along those lines, for the elementary student, are they expected to log in at 9 and log off at 3:10 or whatever, you know?
Yeah, they will be expected to log in at certain times. There will be certain times at which the day is over. That doesn't mean that a student won't have some work that they could choose to do during the day or after hours, right? A lot of our high school students, going back to the fourth quarter, the teachers reported that they were most active when it was dark.
At night.
And, you know, one of the benefits of virtual learning for a student is some of that independence and flexibility. We won't, we don't intend to dampen that unnecessarily. So it'll be a balance of structured time and independent time. Again, though, in this model, all students will be, all students with disabilities will receive intervention, gifted students will receive gifted services. Another question that's come up a lot is district and statewide testing will still occur.
I have that in devices to ask you.
Will occur virtually. Every student who does committed distance learning will need a device. They can't do it and not either have or accept our device. So in this regard, it isn't negotiable.
So they have to take our device?
They can use their own device as long as it's compatible with our needs. If they, you know, devices are very personal to some people, if they have one that they want to use and it works.
Or if they're old.
We're not going to, we're not going to stop them, but we will provide one as needed.
But state testing can take place on their own device because I thought that was one of, like, are, we have a group of devices.
Yes.
That is locked down for state testing.
So they are, so within the school, the testing devices, we need to ensure that they're available on the testing day and charged. So that's why we can't ask a student to bring their own, we can't rely on students bringing their own device to complete state testing in school. When they are at home, my understanding is the browser can be, am I talking out of turn here? Do they not know this yet?
Well, I mean, a kid can't just take a state test app and find it.
Right, but they're.
It would have to be proctored.
There you go, proctoring somehow. But for district assessments, like Ames Web Assessments, we have a way through Test Math, which is a proctoring browser that we can use to secure it and make sure that there's some credibility to the assessments.
Thank you.
Okay, and then here's our overview again, and the last piece I wanted to mention to you is preschool and Mrs. Roscoe is here this evening to address any specific questions you may have. She's back behind the pole still, I think, is she still making it? Thank you, Jacqueline. Our preschool has a parallel plan to this that's available on the microsite that's being communicated directly to preschool families. I want the board to be aware and the public to be aware that the preschool operates under additional restrictions than just the Ohio Department of Education as a, they operate under daycare restrictions as well. And unfortunately, for some of our peer role models, we have fewer spots than anticipated. Typically, we have eight special education students and eight peer role models in a preschool classroom. We're now restricted to a nine-student-to-one-adult ratio in a room, so.
August 9th, he announced today.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hot off the press to what?
Yeah.
Do we know?
It's going to go.
Yes, I have heard that.
Yeah, it's going to go back because that was a concern to my members, it's going to go back to normal, August 9th. Daycare centers are going to be able to open at full staffing, at full, what they were pre-COVID numbers.
Capacity.
If, yeah, if they don't, but if they don't, if they operate at limited capacity, you might be in line for subsidies.
So we didn't realize that today, obviously, short notice.
Yeah, he doesn't give anyone a heads up.
Yeah, so we haven't made any adjustments to our plan since it is pretty recent news. Right now, our Level 1 and 2, and we have to consider what the new adjustment to K-12 was today. So with that being said, we currently, sorry, thank you. We were currently doing the nine students. We have been told that we can do the exception to the one-adult rule because we do have preschool teachers as well as an assistant in each room and sometimes even up to two assistants. Due to the students with disabilities, we are being told that that will be an allowable exception. So we were operating under the nine. We found out today that it is presumed that we will be able to go to typical ratios. That's still somewhat of a question for us as an administrative team, whether or not we should do that for safety as well as the six-foot social distancing, which as you can tell is more emphasized in the district's revised plan. We actually were operating our Level 1, 2, and 3 all the same with preschool, but again, with the nine ratio. So very likely, changes are going to now happen. So I can kind of more speak to what we had planned, is that in Level 1, 2, and 3, all six, our nine students were going to be made up of nine students, six students with special needs and three peer models. Although Jack talked about the eight and eight, we typically legally could go to eight and eight, we tend to be six and six, but room for growth. Preschool is, not only are we a fast-growing district in Olentangy K-12, preschool also has the fact that legally you have to start educating a student with special needs at the age of three, regardless of when that occurs. So although Olentangy typically has, you know, their new enrollment wave over the summer, we will not build a, completely predict that throughout the school year for preschool. So growth is always an option. So we tend to staff at six and six with the option to go to eight and eight. Unlike some of our local districts, again, this is under the nine ratio, we were one of the few districts that were going to have more peers. So we found that to be philosophically a big decision from our administrative team with input from our staff. We are a special needs program, but we use peer models for models just of that, for developmental milestones. But as Jack said, that, and I do have some numbers for you, again, this is on the nine, so it's already somewhat outdated as we're not sure what we're going to do, but we have, we had filled for six and six, so we had previously accepted that many peers. With the new model, we are able to offer 100% of our peers that had been in the program from 1920 a spot, so we were very fortunate to do that. Our intent forms, different than K-12, our intent forms were actually due this past Monday. Mark referenced, Mr. Rafe referenced the ripple effect of multiple things. Preschool has more rippling effects just due to, we have multiple programs within the preschool program, five different types of programs as well as in the peers, and we wanted to communicate that to the community that that was important, to get that information to them sooner than later. As we know, we were putting about 173 new peers on a waitlist. So of our returning peers, we actually, 52 of them do intend to return with 17 choosing not to. And then, like I said, we have 173 on a waitlist and that was in addition. We already had a waitlist regardless of the ratio change of 25 students. We were actually really excited. We've been full for the first time, I think, in a long time with peers, so that was part of my new role to establish that. We also have phonology class, which we have seven of our students coming back, this is our special needs students now, seven of the nine, it's a pretty small program. Our itinerant program, 14 are coming back and nine are not. And our center base, which are those three types of programs physically in the building for four days a week, Tuesday through Friday, 127 students intend to come back in Option 1 and 66 of Option 2. So we, just like School Age, did a survey of our staff that had the volunteer basis. I'm hopeful for School Age, yours will come out the same as ours. It worked out very beautifully. We started mapping it out today. We had five staff members that were interested in that. We were going to go based off those recommendations first. Right now, we need five. We're pushing potentially needing six, so we've been consulting with human resources to get to that staffing. But to Julie's point, a lot of change is potentially even going to happen to our plan. Some things that we will need to be considering is, is it worth going back to full ratios? What are the safety precautions that we can put in place? The business office has done a lot of work on how can we accomplish six-foot social distancing. When we were down to nine students, that's why our Level 1, 2, and 3 could be the same as we were, that was a pretty conservative model. So we're going to have to consider whether or not we will have more of a hybrid model like School Age or whether or not we will do a partial peer day. The consistency for our students with special needs in this preschool level especially, their young age has been a component of why we were having them come all four days in their normal program hours. But yes, so a lot of change came out today. Honestly, can't tell you exactly what we're going to do with that. One negative impact is we were intending to tell our families their placement of their building because that is a unique thing of preschool as we are in seven different locations. That honestly will also be now impacted with the preschool addition of those sections. That will threaten the space that preschool will be in some of those elementaries. So that will be something that I will have to work with Dr. Fetti. So unfortunately, we are going to have to communicate to our parents probably in the next 48 hours or so that we will have to delay informing them of their assignment. So we'll be working pretty diligently, as we have been, to make those adjustments and consider what our options are, but then also what's best for the safety of our students and our staff.
Are there other questions? That's the last slide that I will present before we move to operations. Are there other questions that we have not yet addressed? Okay.
Continue, please.
Thank you very much. I think I put the clicker in my pocket. Those are my keys.
All right, good evening. So I just want to go back to the committed distance learning because I think Mr. O'Brien asked a timeline question. So we established August 14th as the deadline to let teachers know if they're in committed distance learning or not. And again, going back to the buildings, like we said, what impact that'll have on the buildings to allow them some time, obviously, to make any adjustments we have to in the building. So my office is really good, though, so that's the deadline, but I think we're going to be able to move that up to hopefully a week, August 7th, once we get the student data finalized next Sunday. So with that, from the operations side, no matter what model we're in, the operations team is charged with getting students to school safely. Obviously, we still have to feed them and we want to ensure for our students and staff that we have clean and disinfected facilities. So we wanted to just highlight what it would look like transportation-wise and a lot of information has been put out as we've, for the first time, gathered data on ridership this year with the survey. I think we've done every, we did everything except knock on the front door to get the information back. And it was actually successful because the survey results, we received 21,050 survey results back, which. results back, which is almost our student population. So obviously, that's gonna help now going through that data as we make assignments for transportation. So as far as transportation goes, the first thing, we are gonna require that all students and staff do a self-assessment prior to entering the bus. So we have put that information and will continue to put that information out to parents about self-assessment, so no fever, no COVID-19 symptoms when sending your student to school. Staff, what we do with staff and all of our staff in all of our facilities, they do a self-assessment daily, and we've been doing it throughout the summer for those reporting to work, and they sign a form every single day depending on the facility they're in. So obviously, we'll do that with our bus drivers. All students are required to wear face masks on the bus. Buses will have PPE equipment, so for example, if students show up at the bus stop and they don't have a mask, we will kindly give them a mask when they get on the bus. All students are required to sanitize hands upon entry to the bus, so we will install hand sanitizer in all of our buses, so as they load the bus, they will be required to sanitize hands, or their hands. All students will be assigned a seat, so again, going through different procedures and protocols, what'll happen is seat assignments will be done by bus stop. So again, we'll load from the back to the front, and then we'll unload from the front to the back when we get to the school, and then same thing coming home when we drop off. So that'll be a little different, and we have communicated that expectation for when students signed up for transportation because, you know, typically, kids will sit in their grade-level groups on the bus, so that will be a little different. We need to do that, again, to prevent students from passing each other on the bus, and the seating chart's gonna be important for us for contact tracing purposes, where we have those seating charts on the bus daily should we need that information. And again, we're gonna clean and disinfect all of our buses before transporting students. Between routes, we're gonna do some disinfecting between routes when our bus drivers have time to do that between routes, and then obviously, again, when they come back in the PM at the end of the day. Drivers will wear face masks when students board and exit the bus and when directly interacting with students, so I wanted to make sure I emphasize that because when they're driving, they will not be wearing a mask, because obviously, wearing a mask sometimes when you're driving could impede driver safety. So they will wear a mask anytime they're interacting with students. So that's transportation, yes?
How many seats are we gonna put in each seat? Is it just gonna be two?
Yeah, good question. So we're gonna start with two per seat depending on the routes. And the hybrid actually helps with transportation by reducing the numbers that we're gonna pick up daily, so we anticipate probably 24 to 36 per bus on the hybrid split.
Did it add to transportation by doing the hybrid alphabetically instead of by address? But, you know, instead of saying, okay, all of Oak Creek, you're gonna go, you know, Monday, Thursday, and Villages of Oak Creek, you're gonna go Tuesday, Friday?
Do you mean actual ridership?
Yeah.
Some of the buses, yes. So some yes, some no. When in transportation, again, Lori's here, but they've done such a good job of pivoting daily when we call them and say, hey, can you look at this? And really, everybody from the whole organization, but for sure, the operations team has done that. But, so they did look at that, obviously, the address, looking at that first and then saying, when we had more conversation about doing the alphabet split, let's look at that. So they actually took some routes and looked at it alphabet, so the answer is yes and no to your question. Okay, food service, so again, what will it look like for students when they go to lunch every day? Menu selections will be limited district-wide to allow for quicker decision-making. So again, with social distancing protocols in place, our lunch periods are only so long, so we wanna get kids in there safely, select their food, and then obviously, out to sit down. And this'll probably be the first week of school, and we face this under normal circumstances, first week of school, it'll be a new routine for kids, and they'll learn the routine, and by the second week, we'll have it down. Middle and high school levels will have increased grab-and-go options to allow faster services as well. Of course, we do a good job of cleaning and sanitizing our kitchens daily anyways, but we'll for sure continue cleaning and sanitizing all of our kitchens as well as additional time in our service lines for when students come through the service lines. Hand sanitizer, again, is gonna be available all over our buildings, but it will be available in the cafeteria and the lunch lines. I didn't put it on here, but we are gonna encourage, obviously, hand washing's important. So before lunch is a good time, anytime you eat lunch, to wash your hands, so we are gonna encourage maybe to set some things up within the school structure and routine to make sure kids are washing their hands before lunch. That'll probably be a little easier in the elementary than the high school, but that's something we'll continue to communicate. Signage and floor markers to guide traffic, so again, depending on the traffic flow, our food service will work with the building principal and the cafeteria to add signage and floor markers to help guide traffic. And actually, that works really well, because if you notice at graduation, we did graduation, we put those little circles on the ground, and those kids stayed right on those dots. And they didn't move till they were supposed to, they did really good. So those help. So we're gonna have those not only in the cafeterias, but we're gonna have them around the school as well. Students will wear face masks in the cafeteria unless eating, obviously, when they're eating, they're not gonna be able to wear the face mask. We're gonna install, all of our staff will have masks on, but those who are actually serving food will also wear face shields with their masks. We will put shields installed in front of our cashiers, again, to kind of mitigate that interaction, because they're gonna see a lot of kids coming through there and obviously in closed space. Table dividers will separate students at shared tables, so this is something, I'll show you a picture of, when we first started talking about the all-in model, we were talking about three feet versus six feet. So now with six feet, we may be able to relax this a little bit, but we have worked on a design to cut corrugated frosted plastic to put on all of our tables to divide basically the kids in sections when eating. Because again, they're not wearing masks when they're eating, so it's something that we felt we needed to do to provide that barrier. Folding tables will be added, and we talked about this. We think now with the hybrid model, we're gonna be, we should be okay in our elementaries within the cafeteria with the tables we currently have, but we've planned for spillovers at the high school, in a gym, middle school, we're looking at gym or another large space, we're still talking through that in the middle school, and then at the elementary schools onto the stage in the music room. So most of our elementary schools and music rooms right behind the stage, we have those older models where it's off to the right there. So those will be the spaces we're gonna use for students seating. And then pre-ordering, so on the hybrid model, we plan on opening up on the hybrid model, students will be able to preorder lunches for the days they're not in school. And then obviously, the same thing, if we went all virtual, they would be able to do that as well.
Pre-ordering of food, so they order it ahead of time, like I want the peanut butter and jelly sandwich?
It's gonna be through a survey digitally, correct?
Correct, yeah. And it'll be a set menu.
So we'll set a menu digitally, and then parents and students will have access to it, and they'll be able to.
It'll be all or nothing.
It's how we're running our cafeteria.
Okay.
I sit at my desk, I preorder.
Oh, that's what you do?
Pick a time, and they tell me when it's ready, go pick it up, and it's actually pretty convenient.
So we won't be quite nationwide, but we'll be good.
Nationwide, don't set those expectations.
That's right. And as I said, cleaning and disinfecting is extremely important, so what we're gonna, one thing that we wanna do, especially during the day when we have students in class, in school, increase custodial staff in the buildings during the day, because right now, we have limited custodial staff, and obviously, with the increase in cleaning and disinfecting throughout the day with high-touch areas, we're gonna have to increase personnel. So the plan is, right now, we're gonna move shift, from second shift down to first shift, and then we're gonna backfill with subs, right now, second shift and third shift if we needed. So if you know anybody looking for some permanent custodial work, we're taking applications for subs. Disinfectant and cleaning tools will be provided to staff to disinfect, and again, like I said, high-touch areas, so some examples of those high-touch points will be student desk railings, restrooms, doors, and door handles throughout the day. School clinics, we'll have to focus on school clinics, and with the new guidelines, each school will have two clinics now, so we'll have to put procedures into place to make sure that we're continuing disinfecting our clinics throughout the day. Signage and communication will be provided. So right now, I'm working with the business office and the communications office, and we'll finalize what our actual consistent signage will be in every building across the district. So when you come to the front door, what's the signage gonna look like, and then obviously, throughout the buildings as well. Disposable gloves, disinfectant spray, and I did wanna, we bought some test kits to do some random surface testing, and so our custodial maintenance supervisors can actually, they'll be able to use those testing kits to test surfaces if they're clean or not, because you have to be clean, then disinfect. So Jeff's group has already tested that, and the first test worked, right, Jeff? He said thumbs up back there. So.
Whether it's the monitor or the computer.
Yes, that would be good. And then personal protective equipment, this has been really important for us, and we've had a lot of conversation, whether it's reading articles with different school districts in the area, across the state, across the country. Vendors, obviously, are sending us things daily and talking to our principals, having conversations with teachers, like Special Ed, Pupil Services Department. So what we're gonna do is, we are going to purchase washable, reusable face masks for every staff member and student. And so pricing this out, this is actually more cost-effective for us to buy the five face masks, and the reason we selected five, because originally, we were coming back to school all in, five days a week. So you could have a mask per day, and again, they're reusable and washable, and we think, not we think, the vendor says 35-plus washes should be adequate with these masks, which should get us to, we have 36 weeks of school, so it should get us through the school year. But then pricing this out, obviously, for us, this was the cheaper route to go as opposed to continuing to buy disposables. We will still have disposable masks because we're gonna get into situations where somebody doesn't have one, like I gave the example on a bus, in school, same thing, we'll have those. Clear reusable face masks, I'll show you a picture here in a minute. Jack had mentioned that, and face shields, because of, for instructional purposes, because a student may need to see lips in the mouth of the instructor, we are gonna purchase some clear reusable face masks for some of those staff members to wear who need them for instructional purposes. And again, then face shields, we're gonna buy face shields for the same reason and have those in all of our buildings for the staff members who need those. Disposable gloves, and the sneeze guards, I'll just go through those real quick, but we talk about sneeze guards, a couple different types. If you walked, when you walked in, you saw them maybe sitting on the counter there, those are called sneeze guards, so it just protects secretaries sitting behind the main office from anybody coming in. And obviously, we're gonna put stickers on the floor in the offices where people should stay six feet apart, but it's just an extra barrier and extra protection because of high traffic areas. We also have what we're gonna buy for teacher rooms. So we don't have the same type of furniture in every classroom across every building in our district. We have desks, and we have different kinds of tables, because teachers over the years have requested that depending on the environment they wanna create in their class as far as teaching style. So a couple things we've done with those, we do have rooms where four students could sit at a rectangular table, so, and I'll show you a picture, but we've bought clear student sneeze guards that we're able to place basically on the table in front of the student, so they can still see the instruction, but also as an extra barrier, because again, sitting at tables, sometimes you're closer than six feet, so it was an extra protection that we wanted to put there. And then I know, in the high school level, we have a lot of long rectangular tables where you sit two to a table, so if you're sitting two to a table closer than, we bought some corrugated dividers to sit between students sharing a table. And then I already mentioned the cafeteria table dividers, and again, thermometers, we bought those for the clinics. We're not taking student temperatures coming to school every day, we're asking parents, again, to do self-assessments and not to send their students to school sick, but we did want to buy some additional thermometers for our clinics in the building. And then same thing with N95 masks, there's different requirements per the guidelines for our clinic personnel, so we're purchasing those, that PPE for clinic staff. And so some pictures, there's pictures of the face masks, all different types. So the cloth mask, you can see the face shield, the clear mask is down there to the left, and then disposable mask. We are purchasing directional signs for our building, for all of our buildings, and then we'll work with principals, obviously, appropriately placing those to help with communication. And then there's some examples of some of the PPE, you can see that clear student divider up top on the bottom, and then that corrugated frosted plastic you can see on some of those tables that we took pictures, I think it might be a high school and an elementary lunchroom there to the right. Okay, masks. Mr. Fetti did present the mask policy, so again, this is a reminder that all teachers and staff will wear face masks. Students and staff are permitted to provide their own mask, but we are providing five per student and five per staff member. And then we will have a medical appeal process for both students and staff, should there be a medical reason not to wear a mask. Students will go through the nurses, and then staff will go through their principal or supervisor with the appeal process. And Mr. Fetti did, with the new guidelines we saw come from the CDC, talked about appropriate mask breaks, and that will be appropriate for students in class more than 50, or six feet away, sometimes on the playgrounds during recess, phys ed classes, those will be some opportunities where staff can implement some mask breaks.
So if we have students that aren't wearing masks and they're a bus rider, are they exempt from wearing it on the bus as well?
Yes, if they appeal, if they feel out and appeal.
And can we seat those students away from mask wearers?
Yeah, so we'll look at that. Yes, so we'll still wanna try to mitigate as much as possible, so that's something we can look at.
Should Spinner be putting the Berlin symbol on all of his?
I'm sure they're, all the high schools are selling. The number, based on the number of sales calls we get for PPE and masks and.
My goodness.
Yeah, Jeff loves those emails.
We as board members are.
We're getting them too, Jeff, so.
You're not alone, Jeff.
And we, our staff, our staff cloth mask will be branded Olentangie.
Is that the presentation?
No.
Okay.
No, hang in there.
Hang on with my, I've got, hey, I started out with a ton of questions, they've already answered a lot of them.
Yeah, I know, I'm ticking mine out, too.
I'm making checkmarks.
I'm going to be brief. Just to quickly hit on our communication plan, we will continue to maintain that open dialogue with the parents, staff, and students through the microsite. The phone calls and emails that we've been receiving, we've kind of talked about those numbers already, and I realize all of you have been receiving emails as well as Mr. Rafe and the other members of the leadership. And I realize all of you have been receiving emails as well as Mr. Rafe and the other members of the leadership team. So we will continue to be answering those and using our mass notification system throughout as we get back to school when we need to notify folks about things. But for the most immediate future, tomorrow, we will be sending out a message to all of our parents and staff recapping this presentation and the board meeting along with a link to watch the portion of the board meeting once we got going and with this presentation. So with that.
With that.
Go ahead, Julie.
Go ahead.
What's the communication plan or protocol for, you know, if staff or student tests positive?
So we have the communicable disease protocol that we follow through Delaware County General Health District. So if somebody does show symptoms, as they, in the plan, we will have a isolation area in the school if it happens at school. If they do show symptoms at home and then go get their test, that then test is reported to the General Health District. The General Health District then contacts us that we had a positive, whether it's student or staff. We have to go through contact, contact tracing protocols. In order to be considered a contact, you must be within six feet of someone for fifteen minutes without wearing a mask. So we would hope again, in our hybrid plan, we can achieve that and minimize the number of contacts. Want to talk more about flow charts or?
You, you pretty much nailed it.
Okay.
Either way, it's going to be through the health district.
So there's a flow, we have a flow chart we will follow and that is again, that is a pro, we're going to, that's one of the things we're going to work with staff during professional development in the next, you know, during that time from August seventeenth when they all report to August thirty-first when we start having kids back in the building. So there's just a lot of bases to cover with staff about how to handle all those things. I mean, I think one of the most important things we have is that people stay home if you have symptoms. Self-monitor and you really have to dedicate yourself to that. We know, I know from firsthand experience that my wife has a child who shows up in their room looking pretty good in the morning, but by one o'clock, the medication they were given wears off and they were sent to school sick. We can't have people doing that. As much as, as much of it is, is again, it's a burden to have a sick child, but especially now, especially if there are certainly COVID symptoms. So. You get it?
So say now that kid's out fourteen days?
So we'll, again, depending on whether or not there's a, if they were, if the health district orders them quarantine, they'll stay, I think it's, yeah, fourteen days, ten days. They've talked about modifying it to ten days. You know, if they're determined to be a contact, then they need to be quarantined. We're still working through some of the logistics of whether it's a staff member who has been quarantined, do they now get charged sick time? If therefore, you know, if we force them to quarantine and they're actually not sick, so we'll work through that. You know, just like with everything, every single exception to everything, single thing that we have here, we'll continue to work through these things. You know, whether it's a bus ridership or whatever it might be. You know, we just want to work with people to try to build the best thing that meets all their needs. I think it was very, you know, in every one of the plans, it talked about, we talked about regardless of the model, the importance of delivering our services to our students with disabilities. That is, I mean, last spring, we had a lot of patience and grace shown by our special ed population. And we know that we have, we're prepared to do a much better job of servicing our students with disabilities, especially our most severe needs. But again, it just goes to everything we're going to do is try to be as accommodating as possible. You know, I'm already getting some emails, I'm getting some screenshots of social media chatter and all those things. So I think, the only thing people heard your board president's report, Mrs. Patrick, so.
Get that up on the website.
Yep.
But, you know, I really, you know, I'll say this at the end, go ahead, Ms., do you have more questions? Ms. Fiesel, Ms. Dr. Wise? Once she gets going, it'll.
I got a few, but I'll start like, so when the kids, let's say that you mentioned there was a, if there's a contact. So let's say it's a household and I'll use my own. Let's say, you know, one of my high schoolers is positive, what happens with my middle schooler who we are in the same household?
Correct.
Does that mean that, or I know it's based on, you know, Department of Health, but does that mean that everybody needs to now go into quarantine?
And there's been examples through what we've done this summer that in some cases, the answer is yes. And in some cases, it's no. So what we're doing in all of this work, we are not attempting at any time to be the health experts. All of the guidance will come from the health district and we will help communicate as we would with whooping cough or ringworm. We will communicate what's appropriate and then we will help inform and with the contact tracing. The one thing we won't be is decision makers in any of these models.
Good. So then my other question is along that lines is let's say that there is, there is, you know, a kid who has to go through quarantine and that kid is now absent since we're now on the hybrid model. What are we doing for mental health far as, you know, prevent bullying and preparing our kids to address? Because we've heard so many names for, you know, the coronavirus. So I'm, you know, just thinking about our kids who may be bullied by this situation. So what is, what is going to be the plans for this when school starts?
That's, I actually honestly, that was, you know, when I started, I thought you were going with what, what would be there, what would we do for them academically? And academically, there'll be a student who's absent and they'll get support from their teacher and they'll get their assignments and there'll be regular communication and those kind of things.
Ms. Rafe, may I?
Why don't you come up to the mic so that, only so that the people at home can?
No, so.
Well, no, that they can hear him, remove your mask.
Again, what you, what you've seen tonight with four of us talking and others being involved is exactly how we've approached this work all summer. We've all been working united and independently, united, independently. So this is one of the things that Mr. Rafe was not part of a conversation. We have had this conversation with middle school principals and high school principals that in conjunction with the things that we've been experiencing in the last couple of months around harassment, this as much as all of these other important type things, it is just not going to be okay for this to be stigmatized. So this would be in our category of abusive language. So earlier was asked about what will we do if somebody refuses? And when we think about how we deal with discipline in all aspects, we're going to make sure that we inform all of our people of our policies. And if there are infractions, our first attempt is going to be educate and mitigate it. And then if we apply appropriate corrective behaviors to address it. So that's on the harassment side. The other side, and we look at this maybe more seriously, is from a threatening standpoint. You've seen the videos of the fake coughing on people or I have this and now you. None of these things are playtime at this time. I don't care about politics, I don't care about personal beliefs. We are not going to instill fear in any of our students and we are not going to harass students for something that is completely beyond their control. So, and again, I just, that's not a conversation because we haven't gotten to that point, but it is a conversation I've had with our principals.
I'm glad you all just heard him say he failed to inform me that.
Ever evolving.
Exactly. Any others?
Julie can go.
You did a really good job of waiting, Mrs. Fiesel.
I'm learning. I want to tell people that, you know, I submitted fourteen questions after that first plan was released and I got the answers. And so now I had nine more questions and now we're only down to one, two, three, four. So you've done a very good job of answering all of my questions.
Good.
But could you address, because earlier today, well, yesterday, Hilliard approved their plan. And then earlier today, Columbus did a press conference and said, ah, we're going all remote. And then Hilliard was like, we're all remote, Southwestern City, Gehanna, Groveport and Bexley have now announced, and that was just as of six o'clock, that they're all going remote. So what's the benefit of us going hybrid, going all remote? Or if we're going hybrid, why don't you go every day?
Well, and I think you just summarized the public participation feedback we got.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that was, again, that's where.
The division in the community is what I summarized.
Right. And again, I think that Franklin County districts, based on the conference call we had today with the Central House Superintendent's Association and the Franklin County Board of Health and actually the other health district, Delaware, Moro, Licking, Fairfield, Madison County, all the other public health officials were on also. Different counties are dictating a different response. And the Franklin County Public Health and the Columbus Public Health officials are essentially demanding that they go virtual. Telling them that they should go virtual, making the strong recommendation that they go virtual. The outline county public health officials are not being that direct and saying they're looking at all the things we're doing and they're telling us that what they find to be acceptable, if there's things in our plan that they find to be unacceptable, they'll ask us to make modifications. But they're not telling us exactly what we have to do. And this, this is going all throughout the state. And, you know, I think again, the governor has made it clear that this is a local control decision. You know, I do think, and as Joe Mizzola from Franklin County said, red in Franklin County is significantly different than red in Delaware County. And so, you know, we believe right now that the conditions are such that it warrants us the ability to bring our kids back properly socially distanced, proper, with proper safety procedures. And being on that hybrid model starts to address the social emotional learning aspects of kids coming back, getting into the school building, getting to see their friends, getting into a routine, getting mental health supports. It gets our teachers back. Again, all-in, three-feet social distancing, they're given where we went to as a county, started to create more safety concerns for us. I think in this model, we're able to get a gauge on where we are safely for our students and our staff and hopefully move to all-in. You know, so it, you know, again, I think that that is, our hybrid model is better than an all-virtual model because our teachers will have the opportunity to get to know their students, to be with them, to find out what they're like. We were able to transition to a virtual model at the end of the year because it, teachers had been with their kids for three-quarters of the year. I think that's really going to be very, very difficult to do initially from the onset. So I think it is worth, the benefits of this are worth us coming in on this hybrid model to start, so.
Are you holding fast to that August second deadline for committing to which plan? You know, either the full remote or the?
We, we discussed that at length as a leadership team. And of course, there is a certain member of our leadership team who wants to always try to acquiesce and give what people, everything they possibly want. And I. And then there's the rest of them. But the reality is, is there are just too many logistical concerns that we have to work through. Initially, we made the deadline July twenty-sixth, we did move it to August second to give another set time because we're coming off of this July twenty-eighth meeting. You know. But, you know, again, I've been in the district for seventeen years and we've got a lot of deadlines written. So, I mean, we're, I'm saying yes, we're going to stick to that hard and fast deadline, but, you know, as we all know, we like to always say in Allentangie, us saying no is the first step to saying yes. I mean, it's just, we're going to, we're going to try to, we're going to work with everybody to try to meet their needs. You know, our deadline is August second though. The big outliers, again, as people continue to have questions, we will take those questions, try to give them as much information as we can so they can make an informed decision. You know, I think after tonight's presentation, after we update the microsite coming off of this, there should be enough that more people can make that informed decision.
We're more than thirty days away from the start of school. And after listening to the governor today, he said he may have more recommendations come Thursday. I, I am of the belief that whatever we approve tonight is going to be changed by the time we start school. Just because the pandemic is changing.
It is.
You know, and honestly, in my conversation with the Franklin County or the Delaware County General Health District today, our numbers are, were down today. Now that's one day. So again, we're going to see, there may be more restrictions put in place. I think some of the recommendations that are coming down, the orders with regards to extracurricular activities expire so in three days. So we need to make another decision on that. So we're looking for additional guidance from the Ohio High School Athletic Association and the Ohio Capitol Conference. You know, we've been meeting on what those could look like. You know, we're trying to hold out to give hope that we can have as much normalcy in activity as possible. But, you know, you saw how state announced today that you're only have twenty percent attendance. No tailgating. So.
Sacrifice for everyone.
Maybe some of our emails can be directed down there.
And then my last comment is a comment. I just want to reiterate to those parents who are really stressing out and what Mindy said at the very beginning, before you post, before you email, think about what you're saying. You know, I do this all the time, I write it down and then I'll delete it after I wrote it. But no one in the United States took a class called Teaching Online during a pandemic. So if we don't have the answers tonight, we'll work to get you those answers, but don't be mad at us because we don't have the answers tonight. You know, I've got a daughter who teaches in Las Vegas, a sister who teaches in Pickerington, and we all have different plans. So we're all trying to do this together. And I haven't heard one plan that is superior to the others. So just have some patience with us.
Well, and I know that there's, you know, and I made an email comment to somebody that, you know, we've got a long way to go to August thirty-first. And I said that because things are going to change. Things, I mean, if the conditions of the county get drastically worse, we may have to go to a virtual model. I don't anticipate that they're going to get so good that we're going to be able to open all-in. And I do think this, you know, at the time on July thirteenth, I felt confident at that time about the conditions in the county that we could give that a try. At the same time, you know, and people say kids don't get sick, but adults do. We do have to think about our staff. You know, are there more questions before I close?
No, but there's a family in the villages of Allen Creek who can tell you about her kids who got sick.
And, and I think it's, you know, it is important for the community to know how we have all worked together between the, obviously, the board and our leadership team, our administration and our teaching staff. The teachers across, teachers unions across the country are telling superintendents and school boards how to open. Sending letters of demands. And that's not happening here in Allentangie because we work collaboratively with the OTA and the association members. We work collaboratively with OPSI, both OPSI associations, Kevin Vangeloff and John McDonald and Elaine Eddy, our association presidents. You know, I sing their praises all the time because they work collaboratively with us. They share their concerns, they help us find resolutions that fit. And they stay, we all stay in our lanes as we work together. You know, I really do appreciate, almost every email I got started with an appreciation for how hard this is. And an appreciation for how hard the board works, an appreciation for how hard the administration does work at this. And then, of course, the other comments that come with it. But I do know the vast majority of our community does understand and support that. And that, you know, I respect the emails we get, I respect the ones we get that are highly respectful. And I usually respond to people in that. And I usually respond to people in that manner when they send me an email and I say, thank you for your respectful email. I wish I had all the answers and I wish I had a crystal ball to make this all right. You know. Well, everybody knows my wife teaches for the district, so I'm sending her back in to do her job. Mr. Meyer has child in the district. Mr. Fetty has two children in the district. Quite a few of the people in the room here have children in the district. Mr. O'Brien has three. Mrs. Hatfield has, you know, and so on and so on and so on. You know, and I want you to all have that confidence that we're being prudent in our decision-making and our planning and thorough and thoughtful. And, and I do think we've given everybody in the community enough options to choose from, to receive a high-quality education, the highest quality education we're pre, we're able to provide. But it is going to be different than what is normal here in Olin Tangi. You know, and, and, and the thing about it is, is that, you know, again, based on what I heard, vaccine, the likelihood of a vaccine is, is far off still after the first of the year. The likelihood of, you know, conditions improving drastically enough to make this just go away, we're going to deal with this all school year, one way or the other. We want to try to be, have consistency as much as we can. And I think that's what we've put forward to you, so respectfully ask for your approval.
I do have a couple of comments. They're not questions. You know, we, we, I have, I have, I actually have something to ask of the district. I don't know that it's my place to ask, but there is a serious amount of questions out there and emails coming in. And I really ask that your priority be updating the microsite and letting these emails sit there. I don't know what information that you can provide. I, I want you to put it out there so they can make their decision. So I, I am respectfully, am I speaking out of turn, guys? I'm respectfully asking that that is your first priority and we hold email responses and we try to capture the most information. So I know we're an immediate gratification society, but we're all having to make sacrifices and we have options. And so now you know what they are. I hope people have, are going to watch and be as informed as they can. I, I, I want, I want the public to know that I have a husband with an autoimmune disease, been on immunosuppressants for 10 years, okay? I have a child with an IEP. I know how he learns best. I'm, he is tracked to go to the career center and I don't know what that looks like. I am also sending a child back to a university. I don't know what that's going to look like. I can't get all the answers that I need. I have less confidence in the college students than I do in the, the student that I have at home within my control. And if she's not comfortable going back, but I think she would lose her scholarship. So I have thousands of dollars worth of questions. I have health concerns for my family. I think the entire board, we've got, you know, spouses that work in the district. We have children that are attending these buildings. We have employees out there and I just, I appreciate, we appreciate the work that has went into this. The work isn't done. And I, I, I enjoyed the pres, well, is, I really do have to use the restroom. I feel so much more informed and confident and that we have options and that we have the ability to react and pivot when we need to. So thank you, everybody, for that tremendous amount of work and presentation this evening. So any comments from my fellow board members before we move along? All right, so I am going to ask for a motion to approve our board agenda action, or excuse me, our board action items. And I would like to separate them. The first one, I'd like to take a motion to approve our back-to-school plan as presented this evening, the Back Together 2020 Plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiesel. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Please call the roll. Mrs. Hatfield?
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve tonight's remote learning plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiesel.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wise. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hatfield, would you please present the treasure action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasure action items A through C. We have the June 2020 financials. We talked about those assumptions as we walk through our financial planning update, but I would be willing to take other questions if you have those. And then again, our amended appropriations and our approval of board meeting minutes are in compliance with our statute and Ohio revise code.
Are there questions for me? Any discussion? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. King. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wise. Please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, will you be presenting all your treasure action items?
I'll probably do the superintendent ones, but.
I mean superintendent, oh my goodness. Okay, it is 10:25.
I know.
I have to use the restroom and I'm functioning on four hours sleep and no food. So please present your, your superintendent action items.
Superintendent action items A through G for approval, please.
I'll move.
Thank you.
A second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
And Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I now need a motion to go into executive session or could we table it?
Maybe?
Pardon?
Could we table it to the next meeting?
I would entertain a motion to table executive session.
If that's appro, okay with you, Mrs. Hatfield? I will make a motion to table executive session.
And I'll second, Dave.
I'll third.
Wait, don't get ahead of me.
Okay. Okay, so that was first from Mr. King and a second from Mrs. Fiesel, or was, oh, and a third from Mr. O'Brien. Please call the roll.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Mr. King?
Fluidity.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. Now a race to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. That was, Fiesel and Dr. Wise?
Got it.
Good idea.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for tuning in and hopefully this can be.
Thank you all for being here.
Yes.
Yes.
We appreciate it. Bandwidth for the memory for our, well, I think this is our longest board meeting. We had a lot to cover. Thank you, everybody.